All right, good evening. I'd like to call the January 9th, 2025 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Matthew Scully for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to call forward Reverend Josiah Daniels, a friend of mine from St. Paul's Episcopal Church. He's one of our priests there at my church at St. Paul's on Fourth Street. Thank you very much Reverend Daniels for joining us for the prayer.
Thank you so much. Let us pray. O Lord, our governor, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens. And send down upon Michael, PJ, Monica, Portia, Tanya, Marion, Matthew, Les, and all those who hold office in the city of Greenville, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right. Mayor Connolly, you have a form.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to request that council add an item to tonight's agenda under public hearings titled Resolution Authorizing the Sale of City-Owned Property Located at 808 Vanderbilt Lane to Vicki May and Bobby Swindle. This item would be added to the agenda under item number fifteen.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Mayor Protem Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be a subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week should not be discussed. A total of thirty minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register to the city clerks with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted thirty minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted thirty minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, our first speaker is Ms. Pam Strickland. Ms. Strickland, you have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Good evening.
I'm Pam Strickland with North Carolina Stop Human Trafficking and also the facilitator for the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. My happy neighbor Vanessa Ferment, who's also on our team. I wanted to share with you that one of the things that we do spend a lot of time doing is trying to convince people that we actually have human trafficking here in this area. People are readily willing to believe that it happens in other countries and maybe even in other states, but certainly not here. And so I just wanted to take a moment and to let folks know that there wouldn't be a need for the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking or the Pitt County Human Trafficking Multidisciplinary Team, which is a smaller group that works hands-on with survivors as they are coming out of a trafficking situation to make sure that their needs are met and that they can move forward. And so those groups are busy, and they're busy because it does happen here. And so just wanted to ask for people's understanding of that and for commitment to help us to do the work, to educate people, and to join in. And if you have the capacity to come to a coalition meeting, we would love to have you there. Our next one is on January 16th. We meet on Thursday at nine thirty, and we meet in the Hartford ENC Training Center. The other thing that I have to convince people of a lot of times is that our biggest danger is not people driving through a neighborhood in a white van waiting to snatch your kids up. That almost never happens, in fact. And the danger to children and adults is actually from people they know, from people pretending to be friends, pretending to be boyfriends, and even quite often people who are related to them. And one of the things that we're finding out more and more as people who were victimized as children become adults and begin to understand what happened to them, they're sharing that they were actually sexually exploited and trafficked when they were children by their own families. And of course, when it's happening to a child that young, they don't understand what's happening. They don't have the words to talk about it. But then, as they become adults and are trying to process what happened to them, that's when they're able to verbalize that. So just wanted to bust a couple of myths for y'all. And also to mention that one thing we hear a lot about, too, is smuggling and border crossing and that kind of thing. And just wanted to remind people that trafficking and smuggling are not synonymous, okay? Smuggling is-
That's time.
-when people come across the border, and that is a violation of the nation, not of an individual person. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you for your long service. I know you've done it for a long time, and thank you for the voice you give to the voiceless.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. First appointment, we have Board of Adjustment. That's for Councilmember Blackburn.
That's right. I've got a position there. I'd like to continue that one, please.
Okay. Next is the Firefighters Relief Fund Committee. Any member of the council can make this appointment or nomination. It's for Will Franklin, and he is eligible to be reappointed.
Like for him to be reappointed, please.
Okay.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Franklin.
Okay. Next, we have the Historic Preservation Commission. Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to reappoint Kerry Carlin, reappoint Larry Hall, and there's still some openings. Is that right?
That's right. There's still three openings. That's right.
Okay. Those two reappointments, and then I'll continue the other three.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Kerry Carlin, Larry Hall.
Next, we have the Human Relations Council. Councilmember Willis?
None at this time. I'll continue it.
All right. Next, we have the Police Community Relations Committee. This is a direct appointment. Councilmember Foreman?
Reappoint Eric Ellison.
Second. Oh, that's a direct appointment. Does not need a second or vote.
Congratulations, Mr. Ellison.
And next, we have the Youth Council. Councilmember Willis?
I'd like to appoint Mr. Will Litchfield.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations.
Little one.
Congratulations, Mr. Litchfield.
Mayor Connolly, that concludes our appointments.
All right. Sounds good. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda includes the following items. Item number two, amendment of the 2025 Schedule of City Council Meetings. Item number three, ordinance to adopt Greenville Utility Commission's Gas Capital Project Budget for Natural Gas Distribution Infrastructure Improvements. Item number four, memorandum of agreement with North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission for a fishing pier at Wildwood Park. Item number five, resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Pitt County for debris removal from the Tar River. Item number six, Home Investments Partnerships Fund Commitment for Multifamily Rental Housing Development Extension. Number seven, authorization to apply for assistance to firefighters' grants to fund technical rescue training and purchase defibrillators and thermal imaging cameras. Item number eight, authorization of lease/purchase agreement for replacement/new golf course maintenance equipment. Item number nine, purchase contract for a Class A live burn training facility for Greenville Fire Rescue. Item number ten, contract award for the 2025 Rehabilitation and Preservation Project and approval of Task Order Number Eight for the Construction Engineering and Inspection, CEI, and Construction Material Testing, CMT, On-Call Contract. And item number eleven, various tax refunds greater than $100.
Councilmember Blackburn?
I would like to pull items three and four, please, and other than that would make a motion to approve the remaining items.
Anybody else have any other items they want to pull?
Second, yes.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Protem Daniels. Pull items number three and number four. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move on to number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three, ordinance to adopt Greenville Utility Commission's Gas Capital Project Budget for Natural Gas Distribution Infrastructure Improvements. Now I'll call forward GUC Director of Gas Systems Dirk Tyson to answer any questions you may have.
Ah ha, that's why you were here tonight. I'm glad you're here, Dirk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. No fireworks, but I have had some questions about our natural gas, about what these improvements are. Are they just... Can you talk a little bit about what they are?
Sure. The USDOT has created this grant program. It was authorized through the Infrastructure Improvement and Jobs Act. It is specifically for municipally-owned natural gas systems, and it is for rehabilitation of old lines that are prone to leak. So we have... We've got an ongoing program where we've been replacing some of our older lines primarily in west Greenville and on north of the river. This will allow us to continue replacing some of those lines. It's not... If it's inactive, we correct it anyway. This is to allow us to get pipes out of the ground before they start leaking.
And so this will be primarily west Greenville and north of the river?
It's scattered. We actually have some over in the grid area as well, but it's small areas throughout Greenville.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good to me. Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Foreman. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move on to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four, memorandum of agreement with North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission for a fishing pier at Wildwood Park. I'll call forward Executive Director Don Octavone for answering any questions.
Hey, good evening.
Hey, good evening. Thank you so much. This is, I guess, more a question of, you know, names hold a lot of power, labels hold a lot of power. And reading through the information about this, it sounds like this is going to be a wonderful addition to the park. I wonder if by calling it a fishing pier, it would maybe act as... The name of it would perhaps prevent people from enjoying it if they just wanted to go out and look. Is there a more appropriate name for it, or is this just what NC Wildlife wants it to be called?
So this would normally what Wildlife Resources Commission calls piers, a install such as this. So we have... This will be right adjacent to the current boat dock. And so our goal as a city is to get people to fish off this pier and not our boat dock. That way it's too separate. That way it doesn't impact our kayak services. That's our goal for it. Now, they will be able to... Now, we have fishing piers like this at River Park North that people do enjoy without fishing. So I think the natural... I think people will naturally congregate there without having to fish. But Fish Pier is generally the name of the dock.
Is it useful to think about calling a fishing an observation pier? Because I like to go out and just, you know, observe and be part of wildlife.
Sure. Yeah, we can certainly have a conversation with that and see if we can add observation to the name.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And with that, motion to approve.
I have a question.
Sorry.
How would one know that the name of it is Fishing and Observation Pier? I mean, would that be posted anywhere? Like, what would be the point of doing that?
I would say that it would be most appropriate for it to be on the map-
Correct.
...of the park that we have online, or even posted on the map at the park itself. I mean, I'll let Mr. Octavone speak about the...
We don't need to further the discussion a lot. I just need to understand that.
I would say that's where it would be.
Okay.
We could... I mean, as a council, we could probably make the motion to have the city manager stand out there.
At all hours.
Looking a sandwich board?
He has enough to do.
All right.
Thank you, Don.
All right. The motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We shall now move on to new business, which is the public hearings. The public hearings... This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have ten minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes, each with a total for each side of no more than thirty minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Mr. Manager, our first public hearing?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve, ordinance requested by Alva W. and Joni B. Worthington to rezonate 16.871 acres located 1,425 plus-minus feet east of County Home Road and northeast of the Alice F. Keane District Park from RA-20 residential agriculture to R6A residential medium-density multifamily. I'll now call forward City Planner Chris Kelly for the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. This property is located in the southeastern quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located 1,425 feet east of County Home Road and northeast of Alice F. Keane District Park, and I've indicated on the map where that park is. This is an image of the property taken on County Home Road. The requested rezoning does not have frontage along County Home Road, so I've added this arrow for you. The subject property is behind the woods. This is a survey of the property totaling 16.871 acres. This property drains through the Hardy Creek watershed. If stormwater rules apply, it would require ten-year detention, nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. The property is not located in special flood hazard area. There may be jurisdictional wetlands on the property, and there are no jurisdictional streams and buffers on the property. The requested zoning could generate a net increase of 296 trips per day. This property is currently zoned RA-20 or residential agricultural. Under the current zoning, the site could accommodate 40 to 45 single-family lots. Under the proposed zoning of R6A, the site could accommodate 100 to 110 multifamily units. The future land use and character map recommends traditional neighborhood, low to medium density, along the eastern right-of-way of County Home Road, south of the intersection with Bell Chapel Road, and into the interior toward NC Highway 43 South, transitioning to residential, low to medium density, south of the Alice F. Keane District Park. Further, potential conservation of open space is recommended to indicate potential environmental constraints. In status opinion, the requested zoning is in compliance with the future land use and character map. Therefore, staff recommends approval. And on December 17th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Kelly?
Is there... I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a school near this? Where's... Where is... What's the school out there?
Wintergreen.
Wintergreen. Where is that located?
Is this the school you're referring to?
Down here. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to see the location as far enough.
All right. Councilmember Blackburn?
My question, I can tell from this map, was what was the current use of the land? Looks like there's woods-
Yes, ma'am.
-on the land. Okay. I may have a question for the applicant when they come up to speak. Yeah, all those trees. But that's it for me, Chris. Bye, Mr. Kelly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
My name is Wayne Worthington, and I'm here tonight with my wife, and we're the owner of the parcel 2121. We are here tonight seeking approval for the change in the zoning from RA-20 to R6A, and we took considerable time to verify that the zoning we selected matched the long-term compliance with the Rising's plan, and it was going to be compatible with all the neighbors. And we just appreciate your vote tonight to make this change happen. If you had any questions about the property, I'd be more happy to try to address those.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Mr. Worthington, thank you for your thoughtful approach to this and for making the decision. I know you've got this piece of property, and that's a growing part of our community. I do look at its current use. I see there's lots of woods there. This does not affect my decision. It doesn't affect your request, because your request seems to be in compliance. I just wonder when it's developed. Are there plans for working with the woods that are there, or have you gotten that far in your planning?
With the woods?
With the forest that is already in place there? Do you have any plans to, you know, what you're going to do about the trees that are already in place?
To be honest with you, I don't have... We haven't got that far. We were taking baby steps, and this was the first step in the process. So I don't have any thoughts about that.
I understand. I understand. We lose so many trees in Greenville. We love to have growth. We love to have development. It's always nice when developments can work with the trees that are in place and kind of have harmony with what's already there, but that is not a factor in approving this rezoning. So thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes.
Hello, everyone, and Happy New Year. My name is Yoshi Newman, and I live in Greenville. I'm not in complete disagreement with this proposal. We need housing. I think we all can agree to that. There's two concerns I have about this particular location. One is, as Councilmember Daniels pointed out, that Wintergreen School is right there. If you're in that area during drop-off and pickup times, the traffic is crazy. They have people out there directing traffic. And it's another case of, and this further discussion, I think, that needs to be had about this, because the decision last year, at the end of last year, about the commercial development off of 10th Street, is, I think it's really important to look at first building adequate infrastructure to accommodate traffic, to accommodate safe movement through our roadways. That's a two-lane road. It's not... I don't think it's going to be sufficient. It's not the current capacity to have... I don't know how many. I didn't hear anything about additional cars. I didn't hear anything about a traffic study, but I think those things will really have to be carefully considered, especially with all of the school traffic. And secondly, relevant to Councilwoman Blackburn's comment, is it's very close to Alice Keane Park. And for those of you who are familiar with that park, there's fitness trails that run around the whole vicinity, and then there's a nature trail that also is part of that, that goes back through a really beautifully wooded area. That... Those trails and the nature trail are very heavily used. There are fields out there. There's a playground. That facility has a lot of use. I walk out there on a fairly regular basis. So what is so appealing about that area is that it's a natural space. We have very little, precious little, of that in our city. It's important that we put a priority on preserving those remaining spaces. So I look at the map, and I look at where me and many other people walk in that area, and if the trees are removed, as is typical, we know how this all happens. It goes in clear cut. That destroys the natural space, the natural character of that area. Once gone, it's gone forever. These little trees that then are planted in their place take a long... I mean, the natural area, the whole character of that area is lost. So those are two things I'd like for you to very, very carefully consider. But again, I do want to say I'm not opposed to development. I am not opposed to more housing. We know we need that very, very much. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. I'm looking for a board discussion or motion.
Motion approved.
Question?
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Mayor Protem Daniels. Councilmember Blackburn?
So I think I know the answer to this, but I appreciate Dr. Newman's point about traffic. I agree. Traffic out there in the morning especially is... It just... You can't move. So is this a state road, county home road?
Yes.
Do we need to ask any questions?
Yes.
We've discussed it before.
So expansions, improvements, modifications are not ours to make, is that right?
And I certainly appreciate the comments of expansion prior to development, but by the same token, we've got a lot of streets that need a significant amount of work right now that are heavily traveled. So, I mean, there's all kinds of needs out there, and that's why I continue to say we need to continue to put as a priority funding through DOT for traffic and streets.
And so add this one to the list.
There you go.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirteen, ordinance requested by Camping World Holdings Incorporated to amend Title IX, Chapter Four, Section 227. SANS not requiring permits to allow up to three flag poles with a maximum height of each flag pole of 130 feet above grade in non-residential zoning districts and up to three non-commercial flags on each pole with a maximum flag- districts and up to three non-commercial flags on each pole with a maximum flag size of no more than 3,200 square feet for each flag. I'll again call forward City Planner Chris Kelly for the presentation.
So I'll be covering a lot of information in this presentation. This proposed text amendment is not staff-initiated, so this presentation will explain the current zoning regulations as well as the requested regulations. But before I go into the regulations, I want to provide a brief background on how this text amendment has come about. Typically, a text amendment is requested prior to a project. However, this text amendment is being requested because of completed work that does not meet zoning regulations. In July of 2024, a commercial building permit for a flag pole was issued for the Camping World business. The submitted building permit specified a 70-foot flag pole with a max flag size of 12 by 18, which is 216 square feet. This height and flag size represents the current maximum allowance for the city of Greenville and would be perfectly acceptable in terms of zoning code. However, on October 28th, the Planning Division received a complaint with concerns of the flag size. Planning staff looked into the complaint, which led to a notice of violation being sent on October 31st. This is a photo taken on October 28th that was included in the notice of violation. The notice of violation was sent as the current flag size appeared to far exceed the maximum allowance of 216 square feet. The notice of violation was sent to the property owner as well as the business with the instructions to comply with the issued building permit to be in compliance with the city of Greenville zoning ordinance. In response to the notice of violation, the flag company contacted the Planning Division on November 5th to speak about the next steps required to keep the current flag. Through this conversation, I was informed that the flag is actually a 40-foot by 80-foot flag, which is 3,200 square feet. This discussion concluded with the understanding that either the flag is replaced with what was on the building permit, or that a text amendment would need to be approved by the city council. Following this, the same conversation was had with the Camping World employee on November 12th, who then submitted the text amendment request on November 15th. And since then, staff has not been asked by the applicant for assistance or guidance on the suggested language. The applicant is requesting to amend the city's regulations on flag poles and flags. Under the city's current zoning ordinance, flag poles and flags are types of signage that do not require a zoning permit. This exemption does not mean that other permits, such as a building permit, would not apply. Therefore, while no zoning approval is required, North Carolina Building Code does require a building permit for flag poles placed on non-residential properties. However, the city of Greenville zoning code does regulate the number of flag poles and flags, as well as the height limits of flag poles and size limits for flags. The applicant's request includes increasing the allowable height of a flag pole. And just as clarification, the height of a flag pole begins at grade, so in other words, at ground level. Throughout this presentation, you will hear me use the words "non-residential" and "residential." The zoning code regulations differentiate between non-residential and residential zoning districts to determine the allowable height of a flag pole. An example of a non-residential zoning district would be heavy commercial, so just think of zoning districts that do not have residential uses. Another set of terms are "non-commercial" and "commercial" flags. The zoning code differentiates "non-commercial" and "commercial" flags to determine the flag size allowance. Examples of non-commercial flags are on the right side of the screen, such as country flags, state flags, and even sports teams' flags. Commercial flags are types of flags that are used as advertisement for commercial purposes, such as Chick-fil-A flag, shown on the screen. The applicant's text amendment request is to amend the zoning regulations for non-residential flag pole heights and non-commercial flag sizes. An important note to make is that the city of Greenville nor any local government has the authority to regulate the content of the flag. This text amendment is not for a specific flag. It is for any non-commercial flag. Zoning regulations can concern aspects such as the size, number, and location of flags, but not the content. On the screen are the current regulations for flag poles and flag size in the city of Greenville. Number one provides the height limit of flag poles in non-residential zoning districts, with the height being the maximum height allowed in the zoning district, or 70 feet, whichever is less. Included in your staff report is the list of the 16 non-residential zoning districts in the city of Greenville, as well as the maximum heights allowed. Number two covers residential zoning districts with flag poles not exceeding 25 feet in Number three of the regulations establish the maximum size of flags as to be proportionate to the flag pole height, such as for a residential property with a 25-foot flag pole, the maximum flag size would be 24 square feet. Non-residential properties can utilize any row of this table, as the maximum height of the flag pole can be 70 feet or less. And I don't think I need to go through each line of the table, but as you can see, a 70-foot flag pole can have a non-commercial flag size of 216 square feet. Numbers four and five are extremely important. Number four establishes that each property can, is allowed three flag poles, and number five establishes that each flag pole can have up to three flags. Therefore, under current regulations, a non-residential property can have three 70-foot flag poles and up to nine total flags. This slide shows the applicant's requested amendment. If the text is read and striped through, the applicant is proposing to remove it from the regulations, and if text is read, the applicant is proposing to add it to the regulations. As you will see, the applicant is requesting to amend numbers one and three. The applicant is proposing to increase the allowable height of a flag pole in non-residential zoning districts from 70 feet to 100 feet. The applicant is also requesting to remove the maximum height limit of the zoning district, choosing to request the standards be 130 feet for any non-residential zoning district. This height increase can also be seen in the table in the leftmost column below number three with the additional row. This slide shows the maximum height allowed in the 16 non-residential zoning districts in the city of Greenville. Eight of the 16 zoning districts do not have a height limit, however, six of the zoning districts have height limits that are lower than the requested 130-foot flag pole allowance. The proposed regulations would then allow for flag pole heights to far exceed the height of the buildings. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to add a maximum non-commercial flag size of 3,200 square feet to be allowed for the 130-foot flag pole. In comparison to the current maximum flag size of 216 square feet, the requested 3,200 square feet represents a 1,381% increase. It's important to point out now that the applicant is not requesting to amend numbers four and five as it relates to the number of allowed flag poles and flags. The map before you shows you the 16 non-residential zoning districts in the city of Greenville. Therefore, under the proposed language, regardless of the size of property, each one of these red properties would be allowed to have three flag poles that are 130 feet tall. Additionally, each flag pole would be allowed to have three 3,200-square-foot non-commercial To visualize the applicant's request, I've made a few graphics. This slide is to show you the current proposed flag pole heights, and just for your information, the scale is shown in the bottom left of the screen, with one inch being 30 feet. As you can see, the current 70-foot is being proposed to be 130 feet, nearly double in height. Furthermore, the regulations will continue to allow each property to have a maximum of three flag poles. This slide is meant to show you the proposed non-commercial flag size allowance. The left side of the screen shows the current allowed non-commercial flag size being 216 square feet, and the right side shows you the 3,200-square-foot proposal. However, once again, each flag pole can have up to three flags at the maximum allowed size. This slide shows you what the current regulations and how they may look. This slide shows you the proposal, how the proposed regulations may look. This slide is extremely important to visualize the potential visual impact that the applicant's request may create, and again, under the current and proposed zoning code regulations, there are no separation requirements between flag poles and no setback regulations. Apart from the applicant's proposed text amendment, there are additional considerations that should be made. Importantly, in March of 2020, city council approved a text amendment requested by the Planning and Development Services Department. This text amendment was done proactively because of a similar situation related to a very large flag in another community. However, the situation in that community involved a specific location right off of an interstate. Therefore, the highway sign overlay district was created with the intent of giving properties that are shown in the red-hatched overlay the, with greater flexibility for flag poles and flags. The reason this specific area was chosen is because the properties are fronting along four-lane divided highway, uh, roads. Much of the overlay includes properties that are larger in size and of a commercial or industrial nature or use. The standards for flag poles and flags are increased in the overlay district. As established in the zoning ordinance, non-residential properties located in the overlay district are allowed only one flag pole up to 130 feet and a maximum flag size of 1,000 square feet. The increase in allowance also necessitated the need of establishing setback standards. If a non-residential property in the overlay district wanted to utilize the standards, then the flag pole also required a setback. The setback is for each foot the flag pole exceeds 70 feet, an additional foot setback would be required. Therefore, a 130-foot flag pole would require an additional 60-foot setback. In staff's opinion, the proposed text amendment is not in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 1, Building Great Places, Action 1.9. The intent of this item is to speak about the visual aspects of the commercial properties throughout the city, and another aspect of staff's recommendation is a concern for health, safety, and welfare of the city. Therefore, staff recommends denial. And just to reiterate staff's concerns, the request is citywide. It is not site-specific. This text amendment would allow large flags on a large portion of the city, as shown on the previous map with the properties in red. Additionally, the request would increase the allowable non-commercial flag size by 1,381%, which is an enormous increase that can lead to safety concerns. Finally, the city council approved standards for the highway sign overlay district previously in 2020, with the area most appropriate for flag poles and flags of this height. And on December 17th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend denial of the request, with one board member voting to abstain. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Blackburn?
A few questions for you. Thank you. That was a very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Lots of good information. So my first question has to do with the permit.
Yes, ma'am.
That was submitted to the city. The permit was for a flag that would have been in compliance. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Let me go back to it real quick. Yes, ma'am. It specified a 70, or a 69, 70-foot flag pole with the ball truck included, the ball on top, and a max flag size of 12 by 18, 216 square feet.
So do we know what happened between the time the permit was submitted and the time the flag actually went up? Just a change of plans? Or I guess maybe that's a question for the applicant?
That would be a great question for the applicant.
My second question is to confirm something that I think is also essential to this conversation, which is, if you could go back to the slide that shows what's permitted, what type of non-commercial, what we mean when we talk about a non-commercial flag? It's any country, is that right? Just to confirm, any country?
Any country.
Any state?
Yes, ma'am.
Any city, organizations, sports teams. So in theory, you know, we could get a New York Jets, three New York Jets, giant New York Jets flags flying, you know, just as an example. We could get, I don't know, three enormous EU flags. It could be anything, any other country.
Yes, ma'am.
Other than America, an American flag. Thank you. And then, so we can't regulate the content. My last question is kind of more of a question that you may not have the answer to, but I have seen this 40 by 80 flag compared to roughly 75%, three-quarters of a basketball court. I've seen it compared to football fields. We're talking about a very large flag. Is that right?
Very large. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
I've got some questions kind of along the lines of Councilmember Blackburn's questions, because I'm concerned about the application process, and I want to make sure that I fully understand what happened and the timing and the sequence of it, as well as those who are in the audience, and also those who may be watching on TV, because I think the application process was not known to a lot of people, and I want to make sure that's very clear, crystal clear. So if I understand in July, the applicant completed a written application because it was a building permit needed, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I understand that they actually put down, "We would like to install aluminum powder-coated white flag poles 69 feet and fly a US 12-feet-by-18 flag." Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And on our exhibits, there was a schematic drawing of a flag that looked like it came out of a company from, a flag company in Texas. That was supplied by the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes. Go back to your.
Go back to the slide. Whoop, whoop.
Excuse me. Keep on, keep on going back.
Whoop, right there. That's, I call that a schematic drawing. Was that supplied by the applicant?
Yes, sir.
And so the schematic drawing supplied by the applicant was consistent with the flag pole height and also the flag measurements. Is that correct?
Ye, yes, sir.
Okay. And so based on that, the city granted a building permit to install that flag pole and the size of the flag as being in compliance with our current ordinance?
Yes, sir.
To your knowledge, were there any questions asked of anybody before this was done about, any questions about our ordinance or a desire to change it back in July? To your knowledge?
No, sir.
Okay. And then, was there any contact afterwards about, "We would like to change it to do something different and bigger"?
Between the issued permit date or the?
Yes, sir. Between the issued permit date and the build date?
No, sir.
Okay. And then it was discovered that what was built was totally not in compliance with what was been issued?
Yes, sir.
Did anybody from the applicant's employer or the applicant himself explain why they did not comply with the building permit and not contact somebody to try and modify it or amend it or to get a text change?
No, sir. They wanted to know how they could keep the current flag up.
But that, of course, was after it was built.
Yes, sir.
And in violation of the building permit.
Yes, sir.
And if I understand, this applicant is not new to this type of business, is he? Oh, is he put flags up like this everywhere?
Yes, sir.
So they want a rookie that didn't know what was going on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that out because that's, that's the deal here. Let's just call it like it is. So it looks like there's some deception going on with the application. I'm not asking you to agree with that. That's my statement.
Okay.
I don't want you as a staff member to agree with me or not agree with me. It's my statement. Okay. When they did make the application, it was November of this, of last year, right? To do the text amendment?
Submitted the text amendment application on November 15th. Yes, sir.
Did anybody ask them why they didn't do it back in July?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Those are my questions. Thank you for giving me my answers.
Thank you, Judge.
All right. Right. You may now. The defendant, DA Riss.
Anyone else got any questions for our staff?
Yes, I would like to add to the questions that Councilmember Robinson asked. Now, he talked about what our code is, but I want to reiterate that that is also what was requested in my, they requested based on what our code was. So they knew what the code was, and they requested exactly what our code would ask for.
One can assume that.
And then the last thing, as it relates to that, is after a sign or a flag is put up, are they not supposed to ask for us to come back and inspect it?
That was my question.
So inspections has a timeline. I can't speak to it, but there is a timeline for when the construction is done and when they have to be inspected.
And we have our chief building inspector here, Mr. Mills, if you'd like to come forward and answer that question.
Mr. Mills, can you make that clear for us?
Yes, there is a time, they should call for an inspection once it's. Yes, ma'am. They're supposed to call for an inspection when it's completed.
So was there a request for an inspection?
We have no record of any request for any inspections.
That would be all for me.
That was my question, once the permit was issued.
All right. Any other questions for our staff? All right. Seeing none, public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
James Foskey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
You ever heard that?
You ever heard that phrase, like you feel like you're walking into a hornet's nest? It's kind of what I feel. I am a city resident of Greenville. I am the general manager of the Camping World location. I did not initiate this process. We have a corporate location at Indiana that initiated this, that deals with Simon's Flags out of Texas. So, I'm not going to really get into that because I don't have good answers for you on that. Was it handled wrong? Absolutely. I couldn't agree with you more, right? There's a process. I talk to my salespeople every day about a process, right? This is our process. If you don't follow the process, I got a problem with it, right? And I agree with the statement from Mr. Robinson. It's a, it's a process should have been followed, and I totally agree with that. The only thing I can state is that in our, in our community today, in our world, in America today, there's a lot of hatred, a lot of problems, a lot of issues, right? And we hear it every day, like social media is more abundant now than it's ever been, and you hear about it. The one thing I can state is the, the outpour of people that have come into this location and have thanked me for putting up the flag. I'm like, "Oh, it wasn't me that put it up," but thanked me for it, and just they, you know, they take pictures in front of it, they smile in front of it, and I don't think there's any question. We pledge allegiance to the flag, first off, right? There's no question about it being an American flag and an issue with an American flag. I don't think anybody has that question. But what it's about, I think, is the excitement in the community. I think it's overwhelming, and I think it's, it's exciting. I don't think there's anybody in this room can't walk by or can't say that you see that flag, and it kind of puts a smile on your face, right? It just, it just, it lightens up the whole city, and I get that. But I don't have a lot of answers for you, and I wish I did. I am not part of the corporate location. I am a city resident of Greenville, but my ask is the only, I think the verbiage is wrong. We do not intend on putting three flagpoles up with three 3,200-square-foot flags. That's literally insane to me. That makes no sense at all. It's one pole, 130-foot with one flag. That's, that's what the intent is. But as far as the other piece of it, yeah, I mean, that's, that's just my statement as far as being a city of Greenville resident and working for a company inside this city.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Robinson.
I'm not trying to kill the messenger.
No, don't. I'm here.
Let me say that at the beginning. Number two, I love our flag. I love large flags. I think it's wonderful, but we are a law, a nation of laws, and there's a process. And what bothers me most about this whole thing is not the size of the flag, how people love it, because I know people love it. I've read pretty much every comment on social media personally myself. But to me, again, my thing personally, I don't speak to my other members on this council, that this is a game that your company is playing. They go to towns, they file an application, they know, they say, "We're going to build it like your ordinance says," and they know they're not going to build it. Now, I could be wrong, so I'll ask you. That flagpole and that flag on that schematic drawing, was it ever ordered and delivered to Greenville?
The original? The one that complies with the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
No.
Why is that?
So, good question, and I think it's, it's a matter of Simon's Flags out of Texas is a company that installs them all for Camping World. It's a standard flag. Marcus, the owner's intention is to have one of those flags and flagpoles at every location across the country. I don't, I didn't, I wasn't involved in the beginning initiation for the applicant. I knew that's the process. We have it Statesville, Raleigh-Garner has one, you know, they're all up and down the East Coast, but I wasn't involved in that beginning piece, and I, I don't want to believe that our company would say, "Hey, here's what we're going to do, and here's what we're going to give you." Like, I don't, I can't believe that, and I don't want to believe that.
Well, let me tell you why I hold that opinion. They did the same thing in Statesville. They submitted an application, they said they're going to build this style, it's going to comply, and they did the exact opposite. You know, let's give them the benefit of the doubt. You make them a step. Okay, I can understand that, but you're doing this all over the country. And then, you come to Greenville, you submit an application that says you're going to build a flag, flagpole, flag, it complies, you never order the materials, and then you go out and you build another flag that's as big as the one you see. And again, I want everybody to be clear. I don't have a problem with the size of the flag. I have a problem with what they're doing to get to where we are today, to using our flag as a way to generate press coverage for their business. That's what I have a problem with. Everybody knows up here, I speak very frank. I don't candy coat, and I tell you like I think. That's what I think. And so, to me, when your company makes this application, that's deception to the city of Greenville, because I say they never had an intent to build it like it was. And so, you're giving us an application. So, do we let the company slide and say the rest of everybody has got to apply to build it, or do we go, "No, that's not right"? And that's what really bothers me is about the process by which, if your company had come here and said, "We see your ordinance, we want to build something much bigger," which, again, I want everybody to be clear, I'm in favor of a big flag. I would have been very upset about it. Let's talk about it and figure out how we can do it, because three flags on three poles 3,200 square feet is obnoxious.
Absolutely.
Okay? Again, my, my personal feeling. But they didn't do that. And then, again, I wonder, why not? Because they did it in November, why didn't you start this process back in July? Okay? And so, if I understand there was a petition that the company started, is that right?
Yes.
And you could come into the store and sign it, right?
Yes.
But you couldn't sign it online. There was not one online, right?
There was not.
Right. That, again, makes me think, if you're really talking about all that and you're patriotic and you're about the flag and 100% about the flag, why do you simply want people to come into the store to sign a petition?
So, I did that. That was me. I started that save-the-flag petition. I did it for the community. I didn't, I didn't do it for a national recognition. I did it for the community of Greenville. And, and I initially started it because I really wanted to see, like, how much people, you know, care about, not care about the flag, but care about the size of the flag and the size of the pole, but.
Did you know the same thing was done in Statesville?
I knew they, I knew they put on the flag.
Same MOs, I call it.
Yeah.
All right? And so, the, what I've learned, and I want you to educate me because I'm learning about all this. If you look at flagpole companies and flags, that people manufacture these flags, they give a ratio of the flag size to the flagpole.
Correct.
And do you know why they do that?
For number one, for safety reasons, because they don't want the flag to be too big for the pole and pull the flag.
I disagree. Well, yes, I think that's probably correct. Do you know what the number two reason would be then?
I don't.
So, when you fly it, it has staff that's not touching the ground, because that violates.
Absolutely.
So, let me ask this question. That big beautiful flag is flying out there, right? And I believe the owner of this company is very patriotic in it.
Correct.
Okay? And right now, lying in states, President Jimmy Carter. Flag protocol says a flag is supposed to be at half-mast for 30 days.
Correct.
Is your flag at half-mast?
It is down 10 feet approximately right now. I have a light pole that needs to be moved.
Because it can't go down lower, right?
It can't go down lower, but the flag hits the light pole that's 30-foot up in the air, the bottom of it, and it wrapped around it once, causing an issue with my light pole. Almost ripped the light pole out of the ground.
Wow. Again, I'm, I'm not trying to beat you up.
No, you're fine. You're good.
But my, my big bother in this whole thing is the game I feel is being played with our system, and I don't appreciate that, because if we make exception for one company, then how do we stand to the next person who decides to do something not in compliance and look them in the face and go, "Well, we're not going to give you that, that grace"? And I get the flag, because that's a very emotional piece, because it stands for a lot of things that started in this country when the pilgrims came over, and if you read the history about it, which I've read all the way back to 1611.
When it raised the dollar.
It bothers me about the way this is taking place. And so, the ordinance as it's been drafted is very poorly written, because if you look at three flagpoles on a piece of property, and then you've got three flags of that square footage, and then on top of that, you don't have any setbacks in this ordinance, so if a flag were to come over and it goes into a street or roadway, because you don't have the setbacks, because that's why the other flag ordinance was, was written the way it was. And I wasn't on council when they were written, but I've read them carefully. And so, at first, thank you for answering my questions. Again, don't take this personally between you and I, because it's not. It just bothers me because of how the process was taking place. I would have been a lot more appreciative if they had been upfront saying, "We want to do a big flag. This is what we want to do. Can we get a variance? Can we get a text amendment, and let's work with you"? I think all this, I can't speak for them, but I know these people I've worked with now. I feel like they've been much more admirable, proud to work with than coming in the backdoor and doing it the way. And again, I don't think it's an accident, because that's how it's played. I've done my homework. And again, I'm not trying to beat you up. So, thank you for answering my questions, and Mayor and Councilman, I apologize for me going on for a while, but the process is what bothers me.
Well, it's, it's good, right? Because, again, I mentioned early on, the process is a process, right? I, I deliver that message every morning to my salespeople, right? So, and I get that, and I, I guess that's my point. I'm here simply as a president of Greenville, you know, almost apologizing for our company for not handling it right, because they, they didn't. We have three layers, right? You have Simon's Flag, you have the corporate side of Camping World, and then you have little old me here in Greenville that's, you know, kind of excited that I'm a famous person now in Greenville, because I've been on TV a couple times, right?
Well, I'm glad to have you down, because there is a lot of positive feedback. I just think that this is not the first time this has happened in this manner, and I don't know the stance of Statesville, but, you know, this is my hometown, and you don't play that game in my hometown.
Yeah.
I've got an opinion about it, and I do. And so, regardless of the magnitude of your company and the magnitude of the guy that owns it, this is Greenville, and we're going to take care of Greenville. And if he wants to play that game with us.
Well, that's, and that's why I'm here. I want to make this statement. I, because, again, I, I literally was scared to come tonight, because I knew, I know, I know what's going on, right? I'm intelligent. I'm not the smartest man in the world, but I'm pretty intelligent. I knew what was going to happen. I knew I wasn't going to come up here with my literature and say, "Hey, the American flag stands for this, blah, blah, blah." We all know what it stands for, right? But I just want to be, as a member of Greenville and just the outpour of the community and the smiles on people's faces, I mean, that's really all I have to say. Process is wrong, absolutely, 100%, but, again, I, I just, I want to be the voice for the city of Greenville as far as the company goes that's located in Greenville, and, and that's, I'm, you know, I'm basically asking for forgiveness for something that, you know, was, was done improperly.
Thank you for answering my questions and listening to me express my opinions and to my fellow councilmembers. I wasn't trying to monopolize anything, so.
No.
Y'all have at it.
That'll take me whatever, 10 minutes.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
I think Council.
Judge, you mean?
Ask them all.
Judge Robinson over there.
Judge Robinson. State rests. Council rests.
I just do want to say one thing. Okay.
Go ahead.
In addition to.
Yes.
And, again, this is not towards you, it's the situation.
Absolutely.
When you state that the morale and the way things are, can you imagine? Because most of the emails that I've received, and I'm not sure about my counterparts, people are fearful of a race war, because once this flag goes up, like I said, any flag can go up. And then, what happens? And so, as Americans, we look out for one another.
Absolutely.
That's part of what we do.
Absolutely.
And looking out for one another, protecting one another. You know, we've gone through Floyd, right? The city stuck together. We didn't expect that to happen. You know, we went through COVID. We had some stuff going on downtown with the Confederate statue, things like that. So, we have to be mindful of everyone. We all love the flag. We love America. That's why we're still here, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
You don't love it, get gone. But we're here because this is where we want to be. This is where we want to raise our children, but we want our children to feel safe.
Well, and I, and I agree to that. I have a 16-year-old and a 14-year-old, both go to G.A. Conley in Pitt County. I have heard, my kids, again, 16 and 14, you know, they don't want to talk to their parents, because parents don't know what's going on, right? But I've heard more from my kids. I literally, today was my day off. I picked them up from school, and my son said, "Hey, are you going to that meeting tonight"? And I said, "Yes, I am." He says, "Good, good." He says, "Everybody in school is talking about the flag, the massive flag in Greenville." And I guess that's my part, right? It literally touches my heart. My, my oldest son was in the Army. My oldest brother was in the Army. My father was a police officer. Thank you, guys. I love what you guys do. Appreciate your service. But, you know, that's what it's about, right? It's about, and, and I haven't heard one negative thing. I've, I've not had one negative call or one negative email.
That's because we got them.
That's crazy.
But that's it. It's not about the flag, and that's what we want everybody to understand.
And I can understand that point, and I appreciate that.
And my siblings serve in the military. My uncle served for over 30 years. My brother served for over 30 years. We are a military family, but being in the military, we know that there are protocols that have to be followed, and if you don't follow those protocols, you have to answer to someone. This is that. Someone has violated that protocol out of love, is what they're saying.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's almost, it's almost like being in an abusive relationship. You say you love someone, but you're taking advantage of that person by telling them you love them. Someone is using the flag to say, "We love America, so we can violate this ordinance. We can go anywhere we want." I've done my research as well. Statesville, they're kind of divided down there. I've spoken to some people down there. California's going through a lot of people, and I think, am I mistaken? You won a news saying there were going to be about 80 more flags or something?
Eighty-three are scheduled for next year.
Yes, so, it, it's a lot that people experience. It's the joy and the pain of this. Because we, none of us want to be labeled someone that does not love America. We just don't.
And I guess that's my point, too, because I don't want that. My, my wife is Spanish, like, you know, and I, race doesn't matter to me. I don't, I don't see color, right? I see personalities, I see attitudes. That's kind of the way I look at things, but it's, it's hard to believe. Again, you guys see it on, I'm sure, being on the Board of Counsel, it's, it's what you guys hear, right? And I just haven't heard that. All, all I've heard, I have a folder up there with, you know, I'm up to 800 signatures now of people that just love the flag, but I haven't, I have not had anybody. had anybody. I have one lady call me, said she was at Target, and the people that were with her said, hey, my kids are scared at her, and she's going to come burn the flag. And I said, well, number one, I don't think you want to do that. I think that's the wrong way to go. But that's the only thing I've heard. Like, I haven't heard anything negative. And military veterans are like, just bombarding me with phone calls all day long, but...
Do, are you first?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do all those people in favor of the flag know that Camping World lied on their application?
Absolutely not.
And then broke the law in building the flagpole?
I...
So that's, that's the problem. The flag is...
Well, they know now that we're trying to change the ordinance, the tax per Virginia ordinance. I mean, they know that, because that's...
I think the vast majority of people don't know that. And I think your company is using the precious symbol of our American flag to divide our community, and it's putting us in a really difficult situation. And I just wanted to know that. Those kids don't know that Camping World lied and then broke the law and used the flag as cover for it. And that's wrong. And that's why we're upset. And unfortunately, the headline's going to say, counsel denies the flag. And that's, you know, so I don't know that there's a way for us to get out of this in a positive way because of what your company's done. So I'm sorry that nobody knows about the fact that you all lied on the application and then broke the law in building.
That's the toughest part, being part of that company, because it's, I love the company. I love what Camping stands for. Like, I love working for that company. And I want to hope and believe that that's not the case.
And I'm sorry for you, sir, that your company is using you as a pawn in this game that they're playing with.
Well, they're not, because I'm doing this on a free will. Like, I didn't even know about this meeting until, you know, people started reaching out to me, because I knew about the one we came into December with planning and zoning. But I didn't know about this one until it was brought to my attention. And I felt it was important for me to be here.
Well, thank you for being here. And again, I'm sorry that you're caught up in this as well.
No, it's fine. I'm glad to be here. It's good stuff, so.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No more questions.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Charles McAlhorn, and there is no smile on my face. I live in Pitt County, and while I do not live in the city limits, I do earn an interest in five commercial properties in the city of Greenville. I pay taxes. I practiced law for more than 40 years, and I served on the Pitt County Planning Board with great pride. And my goal on the Pitt County Planning Board is to make sure that Pitt County is a nice place to live. And I fight on every issue for that objective, and I'm fighting for that tonight. That's why I'm here, to object to the illegal flag in the flagpole which has been erected without authority. Do you realize that most people who live in Greenville don't live in a 3,200 square foot house? I mean, 3,200 is a monstrously large structure of a flag. It's not even, it's not in conformity or harmony with any neighborhood, including the neighborhood that it sits in. And the property, as has already been pointed out, the property owner filled out a permit to elect, erect the flag in the flagpole, and they did it consistent with what the ordinance requires. But then the property owner proceeded to put up, you know, as has already been noted, 3,200 square foot flag. And it's, and the pole is 130 feet tall, which is 11 stories, which is higher, way higher than any building in Greenville. You know, the U.S. Capitol has large flags situated on top of it. Each one of those is 760 square feet. So this flag is more than four times bigger than any flag that's flying on top of our United States Capitol. The city ordinance is, the city ordinance is a proper and a reasonable regulation, just like it is. The idea that some people will say that this ordinance is unconstitutional is really stupid, and people do say that. Well, you know, I know something about the Constitution. I carry it in my pocket, Mr. Robinson. I call that your attention. I carry the Constitution with me. That's how much I love it. I've read it many, many times. And my experience has been, most people that use the word unconstitutional don't even know what the Constitution says. So I challenge all these people who say that they love the flag, because, you know, I love the flag, too. I love this country, and I love the flag. I served for six years in the United States Naval Reserve, and it was my honor and privilege to raise and lower the flag on many occasions. And I always did so with great care and respect for our country and for the flag that was in my charge. The flag represents the rule of law. And I know that people use, people go around carrying the flag when they're violating the law, sometimes when they're injuring law enforcement officers, sometimes when they're breaking windows in the Capitol. People misuse the flag a lot, you know that, to celebrate their own political point of view. But, you know, in 1775, Samuel Johnson said that patriotism is the last refuge of a scoundrel. I think that's a pretty good, and he was speaking of William Pitt, who actually wasn't using, wasn't using the word in a derogatory comment, but Samuel Johnson was. And the property owner has done this, as Mr. Robinson pointed out, in other cities, not only in Statesville, but in other cities. This is their playbook. They have a playbook. They fill out a form saying they're going to erect a properly sized flag and flagpole. And then they put up a 3,200 square foot flag in other places and a 130 square foot flagpole. You know, that flagpole is more than twice as high as any light pole in Greenville. I mean, it is really an eyesore. It is not in harmony with the community in which it resides. But anyway, the, so after, after they fill out the form and say they're going to fill out a proper, they're going to make the erection, proper direction of the flag and flagpole, at that time, when members of the public and the city staff and the governing body complained, they recruit people to raise cane that their rights are being violated. Well, this is hogwash. This is bull. This is a playbook that is used by Camping World, and I argue to you that what the ultimate goal in this matter is, is that the people in Greenville will be played, that the playbook is designed for the people in Greenville to be played. And I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. McAlhorn.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Mark Parker, and I've read some of the comments on Facebook, and they weren't positive. They were negative, and it was mostly negative towards the council. And I think what most people got confused about, passion versus patriotism. I'm a two-time veteran. I was in the Army National Guard, and I served in the Navy. Basically, I wore the flag. I was the flag. I stood up for this country. I'm in, I'm in a small percentage of people that actually served for this country. And people, I heard of people talking about the flag, like this, this, and that. That is not the issue. The issue at hand is accountability and responsibility for breaking the ordinance. So we can try to sugarcoat it and say, oh, hey, people signed petitions, but like you said, did you tell them that you broke the law? Were you up for it in honest? No. You used their passion to drive it in the direction to get sympathy. Well, they're going to take our flag. No, they want the proper-sized flag on the right-sized flagpole. That's the bottom line. It is as simple as black and white. It's not red, white, and blue. They didn't follow the ordinance, so I don't support it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, the public area is now closed. Open for discussion or a motion. Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank everybody who came out tonight on all sides of this issue. We have absolutely heard a lot from the community. And I think it is very important, as our last speaker said, that we consider this issue not in terms of patriotism, but in terms of some old-fashioned concepts like law and urban, what's appropriate for an urban setting. If we respect the flag, and I think what we've discussed tonight is that we do respect the flag, we carry the values it represents in our hearts, in our actions, and in our behavior toward others. The physical size of a flag matters less than the honorable respect of its values. An exaggerated banner flies in the face of accepted, commonly agreed-upon standards. Therefore, I make a motion to deny the request. It is admirable to respect and honor the flag. It represents the values of our country. These values include justice, equality, and freedom for all. These values do not reside in the flag. Rather, they live in our actions, in the ways we treat others, and in our national policies. Greenville is a city. Urban settings bring dense populations, and that means laws to allow businesses, homes, schools, churches, and all manner of activities to take place close together. Our zoning sets standards for our urban center. These standards apply to everyone. These standards represent the rules of our community, rules intended to allow us all to live closely together without creating disharmony. A banner of this size exceeds what's reasonable for the city. Nowhere in our city do we allow oversized disproportionate displays. Just because this applicant wishes to fly a USA flag doesn't mean that everyone has that intention. Once we change the law, it's changed for everyone. Moreover, it's essential to remember why we have standards on things like size, height, location, and setbacks. In a crowded city, there are countless distractions and safety concerns. We must always take into account the need for visual harmony and surroundings that are proportional, reasonable, and not exaggerated. The request made tonight represents an exaggeration that creates a disproportionate, distracting, unharmonious appearance. In addition, the pole is higher than anything else in our city, and therefore I do make a motion to deny.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Scully. Any other discussion, comments?
I just wanted to say that I think this is a pivotal opportunity for us as a council to stand in unity for our city, and I hope that we can do so.
Councilmember Robinson?
First, I want to say, as I said when I was making the comments to the gentleman who was here, perhaps his lawyer. I would love to see a big flag, and because the flag represents a lot of what makes this country great and makes other people want to come here and risk their lives and profit to come here and establish their lives. But when I get into the background, I would encourage you and the audience as well as the home to go look at 42 USC, beginning from section 1 through 7. It's the code, a protocol for the use and the display of the flag. And the courts recognize that you can't put restrictions appropriately on the use of the flag and the size of the flag and when you can display it and the manner of displaying it. And there are many people who don't have a clue, including myself, until I read this about how the flag is to be displayed, for example, on certain dates it should be half-flagged and after new time raised to full-staffed, and how that's actually done when you give a flag to somebody at a funeral, when their loved one that's been lost, has been, has died, and they were serving the military. Looking at that, and I believe Mr. McAlhorn made reference to it, the biggest flag that executive agencies can fly under our state's Capitol is 20 by 38, and that winds up being 760 square feet. That's a huge flag. So even our federal government limits the size of their flag. And so the ordinance as written allows three flagpoles with three flags of each 3,200 square feet. And doing the math, that's 12,000, over 13,000 square feet of flags in one central location. That's not a good thing. And I understand from reading a lot of comments that people are excited about seeing Old Glory fly and for what it stands for, and it's been a revitalization of patriotism. I would like to think that that store did that for true patriotism, but I'd be sent to any things that leads me that they'd use it for, listen, to get people, to get their store recognized, to get into their stores, because they would genuinely, genuinely try to build a bigger flag or put it on display. They knew what our regulation was, and they would have come here and honored us as council to look at a text amendment and given us the due respect that we deserve as representatives of our citizens to consider whether we want to go to a larger-sized flag and perhaps go as big as the federal government. They chose not to. They chose to violate our law and deceive our city representatives within a building permit, only to then build and erect another flag. And they never ordered it, never even ordered the other flag. And that's not an accident. It's not an oversight. And it's unfortunate that the gentleman here today is a scapegoat. I don't know if I'm saying the right word, but one that received all our fire, because at the end of the day, it's not about the size of the flag. It's not about waving that, being proud, and giving a good feeling and wanting to take pictures of it. It's about the process that the flag was erected and violation of the law. We can't, we can't allow that to happen. So I'm voting against the ordinance, but at the same time, I'm all for looking at our flag ordinance, to make it larger and make it more consistent with maybe perhaps the federal government. But the way it's structured now, I tend not to be comfortable. So I will not vote for it. I'll call in front of the vote. Mayor, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment?
In addition to what has been said by my fellow councilman, I want to elevate the fact that what really bothered me during this process was the divisive nature by which it was orchestrated, at the expense of our staff, our, our council, our board members, and our citizens. Also, how easily some of our citizens were triggered really concerned me. It lets me know that we've got work to do. Lastly, the fact that it has never been inspected makes me still concerned about the safety of the flagpole and how it's been installed and all of those things. I am really, really disheartened. I will reiterate that. This really touched my heart as I read all those comments, and how divisive and how easily our community was pitted one against another. And to know that, again, in the opinion, to reiterate the opinion of Councilman Robinson, to know that, in my opinion, a company purposely did that really bothers me, and did that as a consistent market employee that has been consistently executed in every community that this company has gone. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Councilperson Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and to the republic for which it stands. And what is a republic? According to the dictionary, a government in which the power belongs to a body of citizens entitled to vote, and is exercised by the leaders and representatives elected by those citizens to govern, govern according to law. So we're a nation of law and order, and the flag represents that law and order, represents our republic. And this is in, you know, it's just terrible that they're using the flag in this way, because it is a sacred symbol. And it just seems like this is a huge publicity stunt, pitting our community against one another. And this is the United States of America. We don't need a big flag. We are a big flag. We are the United States of America. And thank you, sir, for your service. Thank you, you, sir, for your service. All we need is that little patch on your uniform. That's all we need. When our men and women show up to serve this country, they demand and receive the respect that we've earned by doing good in this world and by being a power for good in this world. So it just really upsets me that the flag has been used in this way. And in all honesty, it is beautiful. I drove by it night before last at sunset. It was blowing in the wind, and, you know, it struck me, it is beautiful. But it does also go against the flag code. When you step back a little bit and look at it from a different perspective, it is too large for that area. And the flag code says, you know, that a flag should not look silly, should not be too big for the place that it's, that it's situated in. The flag code also specifies the size and ratio so that it can be lowered at half-mast, and so that it looks appropriate and respectful to the people that look upon it. It also very explicitly rules against the flag being used in any kind of advertising whatsoever at all. And that's probably a hard thing to prove, but in my opinion, this is just a big advertising publicity stunt to get more people to buy campers at Camping World. So I'm really bothered by that. I'm also bothered that we can't regulate the content. We are bound by state law. This is a statutory body, which means we have to follow state law. And state law says that we cannot govern the content of these flags. Of cour-, that's freedom of speech. It also doesn't have a setback. It's incredibly dangerous. Admittedly, the flag has already caused some danger. When it was attempted to lower it some, out of respect for President Carter, it hit a light pole on property. Thank God it didn't catch fire. But what other, you know, dangers could it pose against the community? This is a place that has bad weather, comes up suddenly sometimes, high winds. What if that flag came off? What kind of damage would that do to a vehicle driving down those very busy highways? What if that flagpole came down in a hurricane? What kind of damage would that do to buildings and property around it? It's huge. It's gigantic. What, you know, there's no setback requirement in the ordinance that's proposed. That's ridiculous. You know, that's, that's a really big safety concern. There's a reason why we have setbacks in rules in our, in our regulations. They didn't request an inspection. That's another violation of the law. It's a huge structure, which... It's a huge structure which needs to be inspected immediately. We don't know how safe it is. We know that they have lied on the application and broke the law. How do we know that they followed building code and, you know, in building the flagpole? It needs to be inspected. There's a lot. But the biggest thing for me is that we're pitting our community against one another. The gentleman said that there's a lot of problems in this country, and there are. And one big one is the mistrust of our government. And that's something that we, as a council, are working really hard at is regaining the trust of this community. I truly believe that the people up here are here because we want to serve this community. We are patriots of service. You know, every person up here is here to serve. I wasn't able to serve in the military. I didn't decide to do that. That wasn't my calling. But I am called to a life of service, a life of service to the community and to this country. And serving on this council is one way that I choose to do that. And I believe that makes me a patriot and a patriotic person and a respectful person of the flag in this country. So that just really bothers me, and I don't know how to get out of that. I can speak as eloquently as I can right now, but a majority of the community is not going to hear my words. So I'm worried that at the end of this meeting, that the headline is going to say, "Council denies flag," and people are not going to read the article. They're just going to know that we denied a flag. And that makes me really sad because I'm not doing that. I love the flag. I love this country. I love the freedom and, you know, that I have in this country, the ability to raise my kids in safety, to be able to have a business and to make money and pay my employees. You know, this is a beautiful, beautiful country, and it's so sad that we're here in this predicament, and I don't see a way out of it. And, you know, so I'm going to vote against it, and I hope that we can find a way to tell the story that, of why. And I hope that Camping World can help us tell that story and can come clean with the community and put up an appropriately-sized flag. The flag is not the problem. We want flags. I drive by Hastings Ford every day. Their whole property is lined by American flags. It's beautiful. I love it. I love that they chose the American flag instead of a Hastings Ford banner to put on their light poles. It's awesome. You know, do that. Follow the code. Follow the law. Be patriotic. Show the flag. Be proud of the flag, but follow the laws of the country that the flag represents. And be a good citizen, and don't pit our government against its community because that's wrong. You know, we're here trying our best to do a good job, and to read that we're not, that we are being deceptive is really hurtful. And not just to my feelings, it's hurtful to this community. It's hurtful to our ability to serve and to tend to do good things. So I'm going to recommend that we deny this.
And I want to finish the pledge that he started there. The pledge said, "One nation, one nation, not a Republican, a Democratic nation, not a black, white, or brown nation, but one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all," in all caps.
Any other comments?
Yes. I just want to share that as a child growing up in New York City, one of my favorite trips to school was to the United Nations to see all the flags unified, flying together. That was, and I remember it to this day, and I'm over, you know, school. Don't want to tell my age. But I do have a question. I hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Manager. Because this organization does have a history of not taking it down, whether we want them to or not, what would be the consequences?
So I'd ask the staff, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Mills, to come forward. We have some information related to what the implications would be.
Let me make it through all these slides real quick. So depending on your vote tonight, if it's denied, civil penalties can begin from the planning division as well as the inspections division. We have different code sections. My sections have dollar amounts as well as Mr. Mills here. But yes, civil penalties can begin from planning side. Inspection side may be a little different.
We also have civil violations that we can also issue citations for, as you can see what those are listed for. Also, since he misrepresented the permit, we would revoke the permit. The permit that he applied for was not factual to what they've done. And that allows us to revoke the permit, and then we also have some additional legal actions that we can take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I mean, I'll be, I'll be short. I haven't said anything yet. I do, I do wholeheartedly disagree with one of the speakers earlier. They had mentioned that when they drove by, it's an eyesore. It is far from an eyesore. I drove here, on the way here, and didn't even try to look at the flag, but it was right in my view, and I looked at it, and I thought it was absolutely beautiful. I thought the flag was beautiful. I would, I'm not going to go back and say more of what Councilmember Robinson said. I think he did an eloquent job with making his comments earlier. My issue is the fact that, you know, I feel like the city was deceived through the initial application process, and I don't think that this particular ordinance amendment would be correct as written. I would like to see the city work on being able to come up with a different type of ordinance that would allow for a flag of that caliber, in my personal opinion. That's just my opinion speaking. I think that I've got a lot of positive comments from people that have seen the flag, but in my personal opinion, it has to be the right application of the flag, and it has to be in a safe manner, and it has to be done by the law. And I know several of our councilmembers have discussed that, you know, that we are a nation of laws, and I want it to be done correctly. So I do think it's a beautiful display. I love driving by it. I'm going to marvel at it on my way home tonight, and I think that it is far from an eyesore.
Along those lines, if I may, a flag of this size is already allowed within certain areas of the city. So if a-
Not of this size.
Well, a large flag. So you can fly large flags, yeah, where it's allowed. There's zoning, there's zoning that allows for large flag display.
And I'd like to, I'd like to make a statement on behalf of staff in this and the fact that, you know, when the ordinance was presented, put staff in a bad situation because by the way it was written, we couldn't, we could not support the three flagpoles with three flags in. And even said that if you have any questions, concerns, let us, talk to us, and we could help maybe find a solution. But when that reach out was done, we never heard anything back. So, you know, if council would like for us to take a look at other options, then give us direction, and we can do so. But nonetheless, from a staff's perspective, just like council, come in a bad situation because there's no way we could ever suggest that that would be adequate, the way it was written and the way they submit, Camping World submitted it. Best off that line. Just good.
I'll speak for myself. I would, I would like to see that. I don't like the way that it's written, but I don't think, I think I'm in the minority on this one.
I think so.
In the most inappropriate way, I would be fine with it. I think the flag that's out there right now looks amazing, and I really do. I think the American flag looks beautiful out there. That's just my personal opinion.
I don't, I don't want to go into a discussion about an amendment right now. I think we need to handle what's at hand before we start disagreeing about an amendment.
All right. There's been a motion that's been made. Councilmember Blackburn, same by Councilmember Scully. Is that correct? All those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion to deny passes six zero.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number 14.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14, ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend City Code Title VI, Chapter II, Article E, Uptown Outdoor Dining Permit to Allow Outdoor Dining for Restaurants Along the North Carolina Department of Transportation, NC DOT Maintained Portion of Dickinson Avenue in the Uptown Outdoor Dining Area and Make Changes to the City Standards to Align with NC DOT Sidewalk Dining Standards. I'll call for it our Chief Planner, Shante Goobie, for the presentation.
Good evening. Hopefully I have brought you something a lot easier and simpler to deal with. I hope not to take up a lot of your time. The city currently allows outdoor dining in the downtown area. So the map in front of you shows where restaurants can have outdoor dining. At the top of the map is First Street. The bottom of the map is Tenth Street. And then I put City Hall on here just as a blue star so you can kind of get an idea of the area that we're talking about. The specific request really involves this section of Dickinson Avenue that I've shown you here by that red line. All the other cities within the, within the map on the ground are maintained by the city, and so therefore that's how we can allow outdoor dining. This particular section of Dickinson Avenue is maintained by DOT. So we've not been able to offer outdoor dining to restaurants along this section simply because the city doesn't maintain it. State law does allow for the DOT to enter into an agreement with the local government, it could be counties, it can be cities, to essentially offer and administer outdoor dining on behalf of DOT. The main issue is, is that the standards at which the city or the county would administer it has to be under the standards for DOT. So DOT has a set of standards that you have to offer outdoor dining. Right now, the city has an agreement with DOT that we can do outdoor dining, and the next step is tonight, which is to essentially amend some of our standards to match DOT So we have really just one particular tweak of our standards, and then we need to add a few more standards. However, most of the standards we have will stay in place. The one changes that we do have is right now, the city currently requires four feet or 48 inches of an unobstructed path on the sidewalk, essentially so that when you have tables and chairs on the sidewalk, people can still walk by. That generally would allow two people to pass by as people are sitting at tables and chairs. The DOT standards, however, require a minimum, a minimum clearance of five feet. So essentially, we're going to have to increase that one foot. And then we do have two more things to add. Again, this is part of their standards. They do require for the tables and chairs and furnishings, let's say it might be like the heaters, or sometimes there's plants that people put when you're dining outside. Those do have to be a minimum of six feet away from the street. So typically, that's going to have your tables and chairs up against the building, and then you have the rest of the sidewalk for folks to be able to walk by. The other thing really isn't a big deal, but it does say that outdoor dining, you cannot be along a street where the speed limit is higher than 45. This particular stretch of Dickinson Avenue is 20 miles per hour, so we are under that. And really downtown, that particular thing is really not going to be an issue, but we still need to add it into our standards. I want to give you just a real brief review process. If this is approved tonight, again, we already allow restaurants downtown to do this, but if someone were interested, we have an application. There's information you have to give us, such as a scale drawing, some other things, and it's a one-stop shop, so to speak. The restaurant would submit to the city. The city would then send that information out to the different reviewers. Those reviewers are the police department, fire rescue, engineering, and of course, planning. Once all of those reviewers have reviewed and approved the application, planning staff will issue a outdoor dining permit, and essentially, outdoor dining can start. Again, this is pretty much what we're already doing right now, but it does allow the folks on that stretch of Dickinson Avenue to have this option as well. That's it in a nutshell. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Questions? Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Goobie, for that presentation. Will these new, will these DOT standards apply throughout the city or just on that stretch of Dickinson?
Just on that stretch. We have existing outdoor dining section, so you've already, you know, you have to have a defined outdoor dining area. This was the section that was not allowed, so that's why this has been picked up, this particular section.
And this is kind of off-topic, but I was on council when we first adopted the outdoor dining standards, and it was very exciting. I think one, one of the things that I've heard is they're kind of difficult to meet, the standards. Is there anything we can do either in that section of Dickinson, or, you know, we've got these, Fifth Street is looking beautiful. I know it's been a headache, but it is looking gorgeous. I've seen the new sections. And I just dream of outdoor dining on Fifth Street and, you know, ways to cultivate, encourage more outdoor dining. Do you know how we can do that, or do you maybe foresee with our Fifth Street improvements that we will have more outdoor dining?
We could. The biggest impediment with downtown and outdoor dining has been historically either the widths of the sidewalk are just not wide enough. We do not have uniform widths downtown along sidewalks. So you'll go in some places, it might be eight feet wide, you'll turn a corner, and you're at four feet, right? So there can be an issue when you have a very narrow sidewalk in front of you that you're trying to squeeze in tables and chairs and then still have the room so that people can still pass by. At the end of the day, the sidewalks are there for folks to go from point A to point B. Some of the other issues that we have, and I'm not saying this is fixable, but some of the other issues is we have trees, we have grates, we have other things in the way. So as you're kind of, you're kind of circulating through the sidewalk, you have some other obstacles. Fire hydrant is another. Dickinson Avenue is going to benefit because some of those sidewalks have been widened, particularly in that sex, section between Ficklin and Ninth Street. That's been fanned out a little bit more. Is this going to work for everybody? No, it's not. There's just going to be some sections where the sidewalk is going to be very narrow, or perhaps you've got a street lamp in front of you. And try to squeeze in everything that you need between balancing, what we talked about earlier, balancing the visual and being able to offer outdoor dining, but still having that safety feature in there so people can get by and not trip and be able to go from point A to point B without obstruction.
And I'd echo that. You know, if you look downtown, the buildings aren't going to move, so the only areas you have are the streets, the sidewalks, and the on-street parking. And in order to be able to maybe make that widen so that you could incentivize that, you might have to take away on-street parking. Well, you do that, and then you will limit the access back to the downtown. So it's a, it's a give and take. It really is not as easy as just being able to make an easy adjustment to allow for that. You really have to make, look at master developing the whole entire area. And we've, and we've even had those challenges, if you date back to, go back to NC DOT for the last 10 years, all the agreements that we have for the Evans and for Allen Road, these are all decisions the council had to make. Do you want more sidewalks? Do you want more bike lanes? That's all taken, has to be done within the space it's in.
So with that being said, quick question. With that being said, is what I'm hearing that other areas of the city do not have specs conducive to being able to offer this? And we know that. Is, like, is there a reason that we just said downtown and not other areas? There's a restaurant on Albemarle, for instance, that would like to have outdoor dining, and I don't know what the specs of the sidewalk are. So I would think that there's, that that sidewalk is smaller than what is being enhanced down on Dickinson. But just want to be clear that were it conducive that, you know?
There's, there's two things. We started this many years ago, A, to bring more people downtown. A lot of the restaurants in downtown tend to be very small. You've got small units, so it does give away to add a table or two extra. We did it as a pilot, just to kind of see how it worked, put some rules in place, what works, what doesn't work. works, what doesn't work. Went through a period of COVID where everything was just kind of paused. But we've had this area now for several years. I think we have some very good rules in place that will allow restaurants to do this, still keep safety. But a lot of, one reason we did pick downtown is because there are sidewalks. There are plenty of sections in the city where there isn't a sidewalk, or you simply just have a more conventional restaurant that actually has like a patio with the restaurant. Most places downtown literally are the building in which they sit. There is always the option. This does require council approval. There's always the option to look at other areas, to add it, to see if it works. This does sound very black and white, but at the end of the day, if you don't have the width of the sidewalks, it's just not going to work. But there is a way to add it where there at least might be an opportunity to have it. It may not work for one particular street, because we, again, don't have-
I guess what I was asking, are we pretty sure that around the rest of the city, that there is a basic standard size that the sidewalks have traditionally been, which would be less than what would be acceptable for this?
I'm going to say outside of the city, most restaurants are going to be located away from the street. They're going to have a parking lot around them. Sidewalk is, sidewalk dining-
No, this is in the city, but I'm saying that around the rest of the city. I'm not saying outside the city. I'm saying within the city.
Right. But like on Memorial Drive. If you're a restaurant on Memorial Drive, you have your own parking lot, and then you have a patio around your restaurant. So, it's not sidewalk dining. They don't even have to talk to us about sidewalk dining. So, it's a little different. When you do get to the inner downtown, the core, sidewalks are going to be hitting this. There's not a lot of uniformity.
Okay.
Coming down Fifth Street and the build grant, that is going to give some more uniformity, but we're hitting, we're hitting Fifth Street on most of the improvements.
Will these new guidelines affect the whole area as shown?
It will for the properties in green. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so everything within green. If you're a restaurant, then again, it may not work for everyone, but this is the, this is where you could apply. We've got the standards so that it's out there in front of you. I have met with people onsite, measured the sidewalk, had to break their heart sometimes. Sorry. And, you know, try to, try to help them get through the process. This is probably a process most folks can get through. We're talking a scaled drawing. You don't need an engineer. You don't need a surveyor. Just to be able to lay it out, to put what are the things on your sidewalk. We've got reviewers that can, you know, that will review it for the public safety side, et cetera. But we try not to make it too onerous, still balancing the administrative side and the public safety side.
I would agree that it's not too onerous. It's a good, good process. Are these guidelines required by NCDOT on NCDOT streets?
Yes. They have their own set of standards. And again, if a city or county adopts those standards, you would have the agreement, and essentially, that government, city, county, would administer the outdoor dining on behalf of DOT. So, we're using their same rules, but we're doing it on behalf of DOT. So, what we've done is we've essentially just had our standards match DOT to cut down on confusion. We're going to have to use their standards anyway for Dickinson. Why not make the whole green area uniform?
Are you aware of any businesses that will be negatively affected by this that have current outdoor dining that would have to change their model in order to fit these standards?
Right now, I am not aware of anyone having outdoor dining. The last, the last restaurant that had outdoor dining through the outdoor dining permit process was Coastal Fog. And there is a section along Dickinson Avenue on what I would call the west side that has narrower, narrower, hard to say, sidewalks. So, it, it's quite possible that it's not going to work for everyone. And especially if you're at a corner, because you've, you know, you've got to also keep yourself so that people and cars can still see you when they're pulling out and turning in. So, again, there's, there's a lot of things involved in this. It would be nice if everything was simple, but it's not always as simple as what we would like.
Well, the standards are there for good reason. It's just a bummer that some businesses get left out. So, I would just make a side note that in future planning, when possible, sidewalk expansion is a very good thing for many reasons. And this is one of them. And I'm very excited about the sidewalk expansion on Fifth Street and on Dickinson. That's one of the great things that we're going to get out of this wonderful build project downtown Greenville. Thank you very much.
And just to follow up, I thought, because I had asked this question earlier, the new standards don't apply just to Dickinson. They apply throughout the downtown area.
Right. We're taking the existing standards that we have, and we're having to make those few tweaks that I showed you. We already have standards in place, but we're going ahead and making them uniform so that the city's, the city standards, if you're in the green area, the DOT standards, which would be along that, the red area, they're the same.
So, so with this new understanding, I'm concerned about that, because if we already have standards in place, and now we're, we're creating standards that are even more difficult to meet, and we're already struggling to have outdoor dining, and we're, you know, we're making these standards that, that require the five feet instead of the four feet, is it possible just to do the new standards along the DOT stretch and retain our city standards on our city areas?
We can. We can. From a, I, I will say that during public administration for 25 years, the simpler the better. And sometimes when we start saying, well, you're the red line, so you have a little different, different standards than if you were in the green, then we really get wrapped around the axle. However, I believe in the most technical reading, we would only have to change the standards for the red section of Dickinson Avenue. And I, I have phoned a friend right here. He's the attorney. I don't want to step on his toes. I think it would be possible, but again, I worry about just getting a bit more confusing. But it, it may, it may shut the door on someone being able to, to have sidewalk dining. However, at this point, no one has sidewalk dining along Dickinson.
Yeah. And I guess that's my concern, is that it's been very difficult to meet the standards that existed, and these are even stricter standards. Again, this is just me. I know it's late in the evening. You know, I would, I would be in favor if we could keep our city standards, which have succeeded to some extent, even though Coastal Fog moved, and then just have these stricter state standards where we have to. That would be my preference, because I really think, especially with Fifth Street being renovated and, and having these beautiful roads and the brick inlay and how nice it's going to look, we might, we might see more interest. And if folks got to say, oh, I'd love to do this, but I don't have five feet. I do have four feet. You know?
Right. That could make a big difference. I understand.
Yep. Matt, you want to say something?
Just that, I think five feet is better than four feet, even though it shuts some people out. In our situation at the scullery, we deny outdoor dining. We could squeeze it in with the current regulations, but I still don't believe that it would give enough clearance for pedestrians and for my guests to enjoy their experience outside. So, I don't, I don't believe that the four feet is adequate, so I appreciate the extra foot. And I hate saying that, because I don't want to take anything away from another business, but that's the reason we don't have it. Scully, we could squeeze it in there, but I, it does make sense in my head. I don't see people passing by, especially at a busy corner like we have, right at the corner there. But anyway, I kind of like the exercise.
Councilmember Scully understands also the importance of some of these standards. The basis is safety. I mean, he can, he sent me, he showed me pictures of something that happened right outside his business, where a truck turned on Fifth and Evans and ran over the planner right there in front of his building and completely destroyed it. And that, that's an area where you could have outdoor dining. And they, I mean, unfortunately, the truck kept on going, it didn't stop. So, I mean, so a lot of these standards at NCDOT, they're built on, on safety.
Would, just kind of a, just follow up to that, would, for instance, Coastal Fog still be able to have its outdoor dining with these new standards? You know, in other words, in other words, the place that had it and the space that seems to be conducive to that could still do it?
In my mind's eye, yes. I believe there would still be adequate room for Coastal Fog in what I can think about. And again, I mean, it depends. You can work a little bit of room if you have more like the round bistro tables, chairs on either side. I think they had like a little bit more square tables. So, do I still believe that it's doable in that location? I'm going to say yes.
And also, a lot of businesses kind of have a recess where you can sit little tables in, like in the, near the foyer and that sort of thing. I just really wish, you know, that we could, we had more outdoor dining. I know some restaurants have done a really good job. Sometimes they, they are not in our city center, but we've got, you know, restaurants on Dickinson that I believe will probably take advantage of this. I just wish we had, you know, I wish we had more outdoor dining, because I think people really enjoy it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Goobie? You sure nobody wants to ask her another question? Sure?
I will just sit down. How about that?
Thank you. The public, public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion is ready.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Scully. Any other discussion? Speak now or hold your peace.
I mean, it's, it's the obvious choice, right?
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
I think we're going to move on to 15A, right?
No, we're going to start with 15, and then move to 15A. So, I have number 15, a resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 624 Hudson Street to Manaya Perry. I will call forward our program manager, Renee Skeen, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're here for the resolution authorizing the sale of the city-owned property located at 624 Hudson Street. Our housing goal is to increase homeownership opportunities in our community. This initiative is part of the West Greenville Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, which focuses on enhancing housing options and fostering growth in neighborhoods. One of the highlights of this, of this effort is providing direct financial assistance to prospective home buyers. All right. To give some context, this project is part of a concentrated effort to revitalize Lincoln Park to, at a block level. We partnered with Bill Clark Homes to construct high-quality, affordable housing in this area. In July, we hosted an open house to showcase the new units, and I'm happy to say tonight that we have received offers to purchase for all six units. Here's a map outlining the parcel for 624 Hudson Street. And then here's the picture of the home.
Beautiful home.
And then, last but not least, our recommendation, following a public hearing approval of the resolution to authorize the sale of 624 Hudson Street to Ms. Perry.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Sweet girl.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well, I'm Manaya Perry, and this is my daughter, Noriah. She's been a little, yeah.
She's been fun to watch, actually. I've enjoyed watching her.
I know. Y'all were looking at her. But this is a great opportunity. I'm so appreciative of this whole process and my wonderful team, who have helped me, the Realtors, and just everyone, all my support system, but also you all for making this possible for me and my daughter. This will be my first home, so I'm just really excited to get, you know, start this journey. And, yeah, I very appreciate it. Thank you all for your time on tonight. I do appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How did, how did you learn about the program?
So, my Realtor actually had sent me one of the other homes in the neighborhood originally, and I went out to do the, you know, go to the open house, and I met Rebecca, and I was like, okay, well, while I'm here, can I see some of the other ones that are for sale? And I went and looked, and I ended up, I, it was two of them that I really liked. And I was like, okay, we're going to go with these two. And then one went up, well, was under contract, and I was like, oh, man, we got to hurry up. Yeah, that's how I found out through them.
Awesome.
Great.
You picked out a beautiful house.
Yeah.
Good choice.
It is.
You've been on your house.
I'm sorry.
Your house.
Come on.
Has your daughter picked out a room yet?
Not yet, but I'm sure she will.
Can I ask her what color her room's going to be?
Yes. Noriah, look.
Noriah, what color's your room going to be?
What color?
What's your favorite color?
What's your favorite color?
Orange.
Oh, I like that. I like that. Be pretty. Are you going to put all those little stars up on the, on the ceiling, so you can look at the stars? Hey, for mom's benefit, so you don't ruin the ceiling, we got a nightlight that shoots the stars up there, and it's got a timer that you can turn off.
I have one too. Instead of the stickers.
Ms. Perry, this is just absolutely one of the favorite things that we do, is when we're able to, to hopefully approve homes for buyers like yourself. Congratulations.
She wants to talk.
Line her up for the next public hearing.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Raheem Tillman, and I just think this is a great opportunity for Ms. Perry. I want to thank the mayor, the city council, and as you see, she has a young child, and I just reflect back to me being a child, that, you know, homeownership, that's something that I'm a big proponent of. It provides stability. And for the city of Greenville to help offer these homes, you know, for affordable living for Ms. Perry. And again, I heard the council member, you know, take pride in being from Greenville, and Ms. Perry is an ECU graduate. You know, she works for ECU Health, so this is just Greenville helping Greenville. So, I thank the city council for this.
So, what's your role in this?
I'm a Realtor, but in addition to being Mrs. Perry Realtor, I'm also her pastor. So, you know, it just so happened that way, you know?
So, she got the two-for-one deal.
Two-for-one. Yes, sir.
I like that. So, are you going to dedicate the house?
Yes, sir. Lord's willing. If you guys approve it, we will.
What day are we closing on this house?
Tentatively end of February, February 28th, 29th, or something like that?
Okay. All right. Hey, when's the first party going to start? I saw you had a beautiful, like porch out there.
Maybe Noriah's birthday party.
When's Noriah's birthday party?
When is her birthday?
February 27th.
Okay, so we just missed it. Might have to do it next year.
Yeah, I like it. I like it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, you may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Anyone else who'd like to speak, on behalf of the applicant, you may come forward, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, all, all of us.
Motion to approve by Foreman Blackburn Willis. And then I got a second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Scully and Robinson.
There you go, that's how to do it. That's how you do it, that's how you do it.
Okay, I'll, I'll pick some.
You pick it.
Gotcha.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We get to do this again.
Yes, we're gonna move on to.
15A.
Item 15A, resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 808 Vanderbilt Lane to Vicki May and Bobby Swindell. Call forward again, Renee Skeen for the presentation.
Get this over to the finish line here. Okay, uh, here's the, a map of the parcel where it's located. And here's a picture of the home.
Wow.
And again, staff recommendation, following a public hearing approval of the resolution to authorize the sale of 808 Vanderbilt Lane to Vicki May and Bobby Swindell.
Any questions for staff? All right, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open, those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone, I am Rochelle Hobbs, and I am back again.
Welcome back.
And I'm so excited. So, I always get the clients who are like, do you mind saying it for us? So, I'm like, sure. So, just really quickly, I am representing Ms. Vicki May and Mr. Bobby Swindell. So, becoming a first-time homeowner means the world to me, as this has always been a goal of mine. I grew up on a farm with 11 siblings in a two-bedroom house. Imagine the chaos there.
How many bathrooms?
We... Well, I guess it was outside.
Oh, my gosh!
Eleven, on a farm, two-bedroom. We bless God for advancement.
Pass the raise your hand, tell us.
Um, so, my husband and I have rented too long and have finally gotten the courage to purchase a safe place for our grandchildren to visit. We're thankful for the opportunity and being one step closer to having a home to call our own. This is amazing, I'm so appreciative. This is the fourth, I believe, transaction I have been able to assist and go along this journey within this family. It started with one of her daughters and doing multiple transactions, and then another daughter, and now Ms. Vicki. So, it's just amazing to see the progress, it's amazing to see the effort, it's amazing to see the tenacity, and more so to be able to know that the city cares, and people are able to take advantage of the opportunities that are presented. Um, that is, it's wonderful, it's beautiful, like you all stated, and I've been in every home, touring them personally, to clients to see it, and they are absolutely amazing. And it's, it's wonderful that the city has taken this effort to make sure that the community has something that is affordable and still very nice. I've seen some projects where people just wanna throw anything together and just give people what they wouldn't even purchase themselves. But to see what the product, or the final product is, is amazing, and I'm glad to have been able to take a part of this, not only once, but twice. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you very much. Hey, you must be doing something right if you got all the family right.
I try.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Come on.
All right, I got three motions to approve on this side. Three seconds on this side. Pick it, pick one.
I got it, I got it, yeah.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Best part of what we do.
And our wonderful PIO is motioning us to move on to other items of business.
All right, item number 16, results of the financial audit. For fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, including review of the fiscal year 2024, '25 available fund balance. I'll call forward our chief financial officer Jake Joyner for a quick presentation.
There was a, there was a comment earlier that this last set of public hearings is the best part of the night. This is the second-best part of the night right here. Hey, this is, this is good news right here.
Yeah, I'm up here four times tonight, so.
Woo, no pressure. Hey, somebody, I'm not pointing or anything, that likes to ask lots of questions.
I got answers.
Hey, I like it, I like it.
Um, this is the, uh, results of the audit and available fund balance arising from fiscal year 2024. The city auditor, Cherry Becker, issued opinions on the financial statements and compliance with state and federal single audit. Uh, the goal of this is to achieve an unmodified opinion from the auditors, which is considered the best opinion that we can receive. Uh, we did, city did receive an unmodified opinion for the financial statements and for the state's single audit. The city did receive a one non-financial finding for its federal single audit related to inspections that were not completed during the fiscal year. Uh, city staff has addressed that finding, has put procedures in place so that we prevent the finding from arising in future audits. Our fund balance policy, we strive to maintain an available fund balance consistent with the LGC guideline of 25%. Uh, fund balance available percentage for the fiscal year 2024 was 29.19%.
That's outstanding.
That has risen about 10%, I think, in the past three or four years.
Yeah, and I wanna say, did you tell me something that, like, didn't they change the formula, though?
Yes, yes, Mayor, the, the, uh, LGC considerably changed the, the formula, and also advocated, given the economic environments that we were, that local governments were operating in, to increase that fund balance percentage. And so, we made it, we made a concerted effort approximately three years ago to be able to increase it to, basically, the level it's at right now over a three-year period. So, we are, we are in a good position.
Yeah, 'cause I think I remember when I started, I think we were like 14 or 18%. That was like 10 years ago.
And, and also, Mr. Jake, Mr. Joyner will show you, some of, even with that percentage, we were able to provide additional appropriations to one-time projects to help us fill some of our needs.
Awesome, thank you.
At fiscal year 23, we were at $36.6 million. Um, 2024, our ending fund balance was $40.6 million, which is almost a $4 million increase in fund balance for the year. This is the allocation of fund balance. Um, we have, uh, most of our fund balance is either restricted or unassigned. Unassigned is free to use to meet ongoing needs of the government. Uh, restricted is mostly by state statute, and that just is, arises from a timing of when we receive the revenue, mostly related to sales tax. Our available, this is the calculation for available fund balance that the, um, LGC recommends, and this is how we come up with the 29.19%. We calculated the fund balance floor, if we were at 25% to be $26.9 million of available fund balance, which would be above the $31 million that we had available for appropriations. So, we had $31.4 million available for appropriations before any designations were made in this current fiscal year. Um, and this is a list of all the things that we have used that fund balance to fund in our community, including improvements at Sports Connections, a disparity study for, I believe, the first time in 35 years. Uh, we have also made various parks improvements, bridge maintenance, improvements in the downtown district, as well as wayfinding signs and a community, uh, pathway. We've also invested in our streets division, giving them funds available to build additional space for their workers as well.
And, and just to remind council, on project number A, uh, letter A, Community Center Pathway, that is basically a very short greenway project in between Fourth Street and Third Street, so that our children crossing over Memorial can go down the path to get to, to the crosswalk, increase safety.
What's the Brightspeed project?
Uh, that is money that is being set aside to certain costs associated with the installment of a fiber network by Brightspeed, the corporation, where we have to do, ensure certain engineering, um, things are met, and that they're doing their work in a way that complies with city code. And it's just money to provide a little bit more oversight over that area.
Okay.
We have to provide utility locates for, for the laying of that fiber, and plus, we have to go out and do the inspections on that by state law. We are required to do that, so we are appropriating some additional dollars to help make that, that, that contribution.
Be good to get Kate Moore Fiber Optic Cable in town, though.
Hope so.
Quick question, Michael, when you, the comment you made about A was that, the, under the bridge?
Actually, you can, you can get to that from this path, yes. You could get to that path. But this actually would take you to the, um, the pedestrian signal right there at Third Street and Memorial, to be able to push the button to stop the traffic, so you could go across. But I don't wanna, but yes, you are right, though, you could actually continue, if you wanted to, to get to the greenway that's gonna go under, uh, Memorial. I would not probably advocate for that.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
But, but you could get there that way.
Yeah, that was the presentation, open for any questions? Any questions? Come on, at least one.
I, you know, I, I asked my question.
Okay.
Great job, Mr. Joyner, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Jake. Yep, thank you.
We would need a, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All right, motion approved. Councilmember Scully, seconded by Councilmember, how about Blackburn? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Who else snubbed you on that one?
Maybe.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Moving right along, item number 17, proposed downtown Greenville parking plan. Uh, Mr. Joyner will, uh, give us the presentation.
Back again.
So, this is the 2024 Downtown Greenville Parking Plan, much which is the same that was presented at the workshop last month. Once again, the goal for the parking plan is to have adequate turnover for our downtown merchants, um, and also minimize the opportunity for individuals who are not patronizing downtown to park in the public parking lots for an extended amount of time. Um, and we also want to implement a plan that is easy to understand and administer both for the patrons and for our enforcement officers as well. First, we'll do, uh, on-street parking. Um, free on-street parking will exist between First and Third Street, uh, between Washington and Cotance in the yellow highlighted square, with no time restrictions, and that is not changing from the current policy. All other on-street locations will be, uh, no fee for parking, maximum of two hours. Um, after two hours, patrons will have to move, or they will be subject to a parking citation. And they cannot move between on-street spots, they must move to a surface lot or the parking deck. Surface lots, uh, this is a change from the workshop, but surface lots will all be two-hour parking, um, for free, matching the on-street parking's two hours. Um, after two hours, they must move to a different lot, or to the parking deck, or they'll be subject to a citation as well. Uh, the parking deck will also be, uh, first two hours will be free. Um, however, the parking deck does allow people to park beyond two hours for a 75 cents charge per hour after the two hours are up, and there are no time restrictions for how long they can park there. To assist, uh, residents in the uptown districts, we do provide for, um, reserved permits and unreserved permits. Residents must provide proof that they live downtown. Um, a reserved permit means that they will have a dedicated space that is only available from them, and that is their space, uh, which will be available for use 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, the cost for a reserved permit is $72 a month, which is not changing from the current policy. Uh, the unreserved permits, they'll have unlimited use of the surface lots for any, um, available spaces, uh, but they do not have a space dedicated to themselves, so parking will be subject to availability in that case. Um, and they can park in any surface lot downtown, excluding the Chico's Lot, and the cost for that is $52 a month, which is also not changing from the current policy. We'll also be offering, uh, permits for employees or employers of the downtown district. Um, these are available with proof of downtown employment, and they can park in any surface lot downtown, excluding the Chico's Parking Lot. Permit holders will have unlimited use of a surface lot, and they cost $22 a month, which is also not changing from the current cost. For parking enforcement, uh, parking timelamps will not be enforced with apps or kiosks. Uh, parking timelamps will be enforced with license plates readers, which our parking enforcement officers will drive through lots, and they'll have a camera that scans license plates, reads that. And after two hours, uh, they'll be subject to parking citations. Uh, the first offense is just a warning. Uh, the second offense will be $10, and the third event, uh, third offense and thereafter will be $20. If a violator has three or more outstanding citations over 90 days old, uh, their car will be subject to be towed. Next step, uh, will be, um, presenting the update tonight. Um, we'll have an education period that will take place throughout the rest of the month and through February, with enforcement beginning in March of 2025.
And just to note there, we, uh, we will also do like we've done in the past, start with just warning tickets through that first month.
Yes, that's correct.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, for the two-hour, sorry, for the two-hour parking, does that exclude, like, the handicap parking?
Yes, handicap is excluded from all of this.
Okay, okay, just wanna confirm, thank you.
Quick question. What are the hours that this is operational? I think it's 7:00 A to 7:00 P., is that right?
Uh, yeah, it's Monday through, Monday through Friday, and then the enforcement on the weekends.
7:00 A to 7:00 P., and then the parking deck also is free all weekend?
Oh, no, 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 that, parking deck is the parking deck, it stands the same.
Okay, so the parking deck is always gonna be two hours free, and then 75 cents an hour afterwards? Because I do get questions from folks who live downtown, or maybe they live, you know, in the university district, and they spend time, you know, at a, at, at an evening establishment, let's say, and they don't wanna drive home. Where can they leave their car? Is the best bet for them to leave it on the street, or leave it in the parking deck, or a surface lot, or?
They just have to get it by 9:00 AM the next day.
Yeah, that's right.
They have till 9:00 AM the next day to move it.
You just make sure there's not an event going in there that will get towed.
But on the weekend?
On the weekend, there's no enforcement, so you leave it.
So, they could leave it at a surface lot?
Until 9:00 AM Monday morning.
Nine, nine, or isn't it 7:00 AM?
It's 7:00 AM, but they would have two hours after, so.
Oh, right, no, you can do your math, okay, good for you.
And that's also a good point for the, for the evening, too. Um, it's essentially makes it 5:00 PM stop time, because you have two hours after 5:00.
My answer next for you.
I have.
You have that PhD in that.
I've got a few points, I want you to finish the presentation.
So, if I park in the parking deck, though, even outside of 7:00 A to 7:00 P., or 5:00 to 9:00, um, I, I gotta pay in the parking deck regardless, is that right?
That's right, after two hours.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, that was my presentation, but, uh, we do have Troy Dreyfus here from the Downtown Greenville Partnership, who wanted to, uh, come talk a little bit about, you know, how the uptown businesses are viewing the changes that we make and, uh, speak on a little bit. So, I'm gonna ask him to, uh, come up.
While he's coming up, can I make a few points of clarification?
Absolutely.
Um, 'cause I know there'll be questions. Uh, the Chico's Lot is exempt because it's so small, right?
That's right.
It's tiny, has just a few spots that Chico's depends on.
Correct.
Um, and then, the graphic early on that showed the free section around the courthouse, um, we need to change that graphic to include all of First Street, so all, the whole red line on First Street is also free, correct?
That is wrong.
Um, so we need to just update that graphic so that the public knows, uh, the, all the parking on First Street will continue to be free, so that families will have access to the playground, people have access to the park. people have access to the parks. That's a really good thing. It also provides some options for employees that, down there, that don't want to choose to pay. They can park and walk. So I love that. So First Street is free. And then I wanted to just reiterate, seven to seven sounds a little scary, but you're really only talking nine to five, because the enforcement wouldn't begin until nine AM. If they were there since seven, they'd have two hours free, and then before seven, they'd have two hours free after five. So we're really just talking nine to five.
And, and no app or kiosk?
No app, no kiosk, simple.
I regret the, I regret the day that the mayor ever suggested that we move in that direction.
PJ.
Let me, hey, let me just clarify this. Let me clarify this. I have been up here on this council, and I have seen those parking meters removed, and then somebody's bright idea was to bring something back in the last year, and now I've watched those get removed. So in ten years, I've watched two sets of meters get removed, which neither of them should ever have been installed, ever.
So moving along, the Chico's Lot, does that always pay?
It's not a paid lot. It's also two hours free, just like all the other lots.
Okay, okay, because it used to be paid, I think.
I think there were some meters there way back when, thinking back to.
Don't say when. Don't say when. I've been here a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. First of all, honored to speak to you guys again today. Troy Dreyfus, Executive Director of the Downtown Greenville Partnership. Although I've only been in this role for three months, I've been familiar with downtown parking for three decades. I've lived down here as a resident. I've owned businesses down here, and I've been a patron down here for years. So I'm very familiar with the challenges, and I remember Councilwoman Blackburn, when there were, when I had to put a dime in the meter, or a quarter in the meter at Chico, so you're not the only one, but when I took this role, the, I was excited about it because of the things I thought we could do to improve the city and to improve downtown. And I quickly got an earful from our merchants and the people we represent of the issues going down here. Some are in the process of being fixed. We all know what's going on with the construction. It's going to be beautiful once that's done. Parking, though, was the number-one issue I was hearing from, from everybody. And parking's always been a challenge downtown. It's a challenge for most downtowns. And I think what's happened is your generosity has gotten taken advantage of. It hasn't been any easier over the past year to just come park for free and park as long as you want. And on, you know, on paper, that sounds great. The problem is the unintended consequences. And what has happened because of your generosity, it's got taken advantage of. And now people that park, let's say, and I was an ECU student, I love ECU students, but they will, we cannot subsidize ECU student parking. They will park there for days, sometimes weeks at a time, and that's what's happened. And you've noticed the difference when school is out. It's been no issue parking down here. I, it's been a lot easier to get parking spots down here, especially at the Five Points Lot, too. I've noticed all over. But the minute school comes back, it gets absorbed very quickly by ECU students. I had lunch at Sub Dogs the other day. I can guarantee you, I can't park on the ECU lot across the street from them without getting ticketed or towed very quickly. So we, you know, ECU doesn't let Greenville residents park on their lots. Greenville shouldn't let ECU students just park for no reason. To subsid, as I said, you're subsidizing the university parking. That is coming at a detriment of the people that work down here, and the people that own businesses down here, and the people that have services that they're trying to offer down here. So before I could try and figure out and meet with the city leadership for a solution, one of the first calls I got was from the city manager, and he said, hey, we want you to meet with the city leadership. We want to figure out a plan for this, a solution. I was like, this is fantastic. So it was an honor to be involved with the city leadership. Councilwoman Blackburn was there. Councilman Scully was there, and some others. And we had a meeting about how can we solve this problem? And there was a great solution put forward, and I made the recommendation, let me take this out to our merchants and to stakeholders in this community before any decisions are made, and let's get some feedback on it. And kind of the opposite of maybe the way the program was done a few years ago before some of you guys were here. And the feedback I got was tremendous. It was very positive on these changes. And some of the suggestions that I got from a lot of the stakeholders were actually implemented to, in this new plan that you saw tonight. So I thought it was great that, you know, I will say this, the people that I represent and our organization is 100% in support of this, and not just the action tonight, hopefully, that gets approved, but we will also support this going forward in promoting it to the community, and being a partner with you guys and explaining, hey, this is kind of the new rules downtown. Be aware of what's going on, and trying to get the word out about that. So we'll use our resources to do that with you guys in the messaging. So we'll kind of work hand in glove with, with the city in any way we can help promote this, because we feel it's a very positive thing to happen. And I think this will be good for downtown, to be able to have this type of kind of clear, concise plan. And the, the bottom line is, I wanted to, if Mayor Conley's grandma wanted to come down here and shop, eat, or have a service, I wanted it to be easy enough that she doesn't have to do anything to figure it out. And all she would have to do is just park and go eat, maybe at the scullery, and there's no, there's no app, there's no kiosk, there's no obstacle to come downtown. We want people to come downtown. We want them to be a part of what's going on down here. We want to have an inviting culture. So that is a big part of it, I think, the ease of this, but then also being able to have the enforcement side, where it doesn't get taken advantage of by people that aren't doing business downtown, but just utilizing our spaces. But I appreciate the leadership from the city in bringing this forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to deny, is that what you said? Oh, oh, you said approve.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
And thank you to our city manager for all of his work on parking. I know it has been a thankless job.
Self-inflicted one.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mayor. Item number eighteen, Contract Award for Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise, MWBE Joint Disparity Study Consultant for the City of Greenville and Greenville Utilities Commission. I'll now call forward our Business Development Manager, Tish Williams, for the presentation.
Thank you, my good evening.
Good evening.
This is a presentation to request approval of the MWBE Joint Disparity Study Contract for the City and Greenville Utilities Commission. In September, a presentation was done at the council workshop. Then we published a RFP advertisement and received a total of six proposals by the deadline. A six-member Proposal Evaluation Committee that included staff from the city manager's office, city attorney's office, IT, neighborhood and business services, and GUC purchasing department evaluated the proposals and met with three firms in December. After review and consideration, the committee selected Miller Three Consulting, Inc.'s proposal, and with council's approval tonight of the contract, the project could kick off next month. Miller Three Consulting, Inc. is a management consulting firm that is, excuse me, Miller Three Consulting, Inc. is a management consulting firm that has, that conducted the first disparity study in the country in 1988. Miller Three is NC Hub certified and has conducted over 145 disparity studies. Here is a list of some of the most recent disparity studies conducted by Miller Three The contract amount is $460,098, with $100,000 contribution from GUC. The contract has a proposed eighteen-month timeline to complete the study. This project will include various large tasks carried out by Miller Three Consulting, which will include data assessment and collection, community engagement, a disparity analysis, and providing us with a final report of their findings and any recommendations. Staff recommends approving award of the MWBE Joint Disparity Study Consultant Contract for the City of Greenville and Greenville Utilities Commission to Miller Three Consulting, Inc. And the CEO of Miller Three Consulting, Mr. Dave Miller, is here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'll just say congratulations for all the good work you've done. I mean, that's, that's quite a, quite a resume of work, so thank you very much. And.
So can I address you?
Yes, sir.
So to Mayor Conley, to Mayor Proton, Ms. Daniels, I want to thank every councilman here in the Dallas. You are correct, we have been in this line of work for quite some time. Our father started his firm back in 1986. We took some of the tutelage that we advanced the city of Atlanta. We're headquartered in Atlanta, and working with Mayor Jackson at the time. And so the same growth that we saw in the city of Atlanta, some of the possibilities with right programmatic initiatives in place. And we're just very excited that you guys are supporting this initiative, and hopefully that you move it forward tonight.
And this study is for, this is for the staff of GUC in Greenville, is that right?
That's correct. It would have been involved staff for, for the city and for GUC.
Okay.
And what, I realize in the slide before, there was a list of things, outcomes that we hope to, to have, but can you give an example of what we would learn from the study? Like, you have community engagement, and you have disparity analysis, but I'm just wondering, a little more tangible of an example of what we would learn from a study like this?
I think it would be best if we transitioned over to your present, your slides.
So I'll skip this. I know I'm between dinner for some people, and I don't want to prolong this, but this is just an example of some of our studies that we have recently completed. We've done a lot of work in the state of North Carolina. The state of North Carolina has been fairly progressive in implementing some of these programs to encourage the development of very robust, inclusive ecosystems. And so we're excited about the possibilities here with Greenville. To your point, Councilmember Willis, we execute a ten-part methodology. This methodology is both quantitative and qualitative, and so we are looking at what happens with the City of Greenville contracts, as well as Greenville Utilities Commission's contracts. And we also involve the community, because one of the things we're very interested in is the perceptions and experiences of businesses when trying to do business with the City of Greenville and with GUC. Some of the outcomes is, we follow the, the law in terms of originally crossing the decision in 1989, and some of these outcomes result in enhancing and amplifying efforts related to MWBE participation. We've seen at the conclusion of some of these disparity studies that you get more participation in the contracting process, you get more competition, and you may even get to the 30%. I heard someone say, in terms of your, your fund balance. All these things are designed to create an ecosystem where both the leadership and municipalities have a very robust and working partnership with the businesses here. And so there's a role that each play inside of these disparity studies, and we're happy to bring that forward to you.
That's great. Thank you. Love that.
Yes. And then my assumption is, after the conclusions and the recommendation, it would be up to the city and GUC to implement whatever recommendations you have.
You are absolutely correct. I often say that disparity study itself is the task, but the real work comes at the conclusion, where you have to change policy or modify policies to address some of the findings inside of the study.
That's right.
Awesome. Do you provide any assistance on the, after the conclusions and the recommendations are given, to implement what you've recommended?
I won't go over the timeline, but I want to advance the slides to address your question here. Here's some of the roles of your internal stakeholders there. And so we really triaged your organization. I like to candid to going to your doctor, right? There are certain vitals that your doctor always, your blood pressure, your temperature, all things. So we do that inside of disparity study, because we're trying to really understand, not the downstream issues, but what can we do upstream to change some of the downstream results. And so here are some of the roles. We've already spoken with the project manager, who we anticipate to be the project manager for this effort once approved, and then even this policy and this board. So we hope that, I actually wanted to come up here tonight, one, because I have an opportunity to speak to you, but also encourage you to understand that you have, we would love you to support and implement the recommendations that come out. One of the worst things that happens, we've seen this happen a number of times, that you pay a considerable amount of money to have a disparity study, but you don't move the recommendations for it. Some people put these things on the shelf. They're not designed to do that. They're designed to challenge organizations, institutions, to really advance and amplify their efforts in this space. And so here are just some of the things. And so we will touch a lot of departments, the communications department, to kind of help validate that we're authorized to do this work on behalf of the city, on behalf of GUC, to help get the responses from the business community. To, we survey the business community. We have one-on-one interviews with the business community. We do focus groups with the business community, because that, their experience, their perceptions are real. And what we want to try to do is either validate, validate those, or create a position, a perspective for them to understand that the City of Greenville and GUC are open for business for all.
Awesome. And Mr. City Manager, are we planning to have benchmark updates to the council on how this is going, or will we get a?
Yes, ma'am. You'll, you'll get periodic updates, as well as a, a review of the final product and the path forward from there, looking forward.
Okay. Do you know how periodic at this point?
Well, it's an eighteen-month, so I would say we have to, we'll have to get with the project team. They'll have to lay out what the process will be, and then once we have that, we can establish when those would, when those updates will be provided.
Awesome.
I'd say, and if you just want to look at it in a third, and a third, and a third, I mean, you could do it every, as you hit milestones. We'll make sure we get that.
Awesome. I know I would like to be kept up to date on how things are going. I feel like my peers probably would as well, so that would be awesome.
And I have, go ahead. What does KPI stand for?
Key Performance Indicators.
Thank you.
I have one other question. How would you, how would you identify the businesses that you are surveying? What would be your methods of identification?
So there are a few ways we go about doing. We first start with those who are actively demonstrating an interest in working with the municipalities. So those who have responded to your formal solicitations, those who have registered through BSS as a registered vendor. And then we also do a marketplace analysis using data tools such as Donna Brass Street or Data Axle that helps us to identify the business in the Greenville MSA.
Thank you.
All right, any questions?
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion?
To approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, next item, item number nineteen, Resolution Making Certain Findings and Determinations Regarding the Financing of Public Improvements Pursuant to an Installment Financing Agreement, Up to $11 Million and to Reimburse Certain Expenditures From the Proceeds of the Financing. I'll again turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Jacob Joyner, for the presentation.
All right. This resolution will authorize city staff to file an application with the local government commission, or LGC, for the approval of an installment financing agreement. This financing will complete funding for both the build grant project and the Public Works Stormwater Pipe Replacement. The anticipated debt issuance is approximately $9.9 million. The next major steps with the agreement will be February 13th, we would have a public hearing here at city council about it, and on the 27th will be the bond closing date. And we just ask that council approve the attached resolution authorizing the filing of the application.
Good question.
No.
Shock. That pipe at Public Works, the whole thing costs 10 million. So this is just partial funding for that?
That's right. We, yes, the first couple of phases, well exceeded $10 million we financed, or we funded the first 10 million out of the ARPA funding, and this made up the gap funding. And as well as the, the build grant, build grant, same way, we, we funded a significant amount of the funding from ARPA, and this made up the gap funding as well.
So that pipe is up over 10 million now. The original budget, when people talk about, you know, cost of things, the original budget, I think, was between one and two million.
First time we met to discuss this, three or four years ago, it was about a $3 million of.
It was three, okay. So a little bit more than that, but still, to go from three to over 10, it's, those are the kind of burdens that we are facing right now when we look at infrastructure. And so I think it's important for, for our community to understand, we're trying to get our infrastructure improved, but things are definitely more difficult than they are now.
We, we made sure we built it into the financial debt plan to be able to move these projects forward.
Good, good. You know your numbers, guy.
All right, are we going to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
And the final gen, item here, item number 20, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Six to the 2024-25 City of Greenville Budget.
And the final gen, item here, item number twenty, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Six to the 2024-25 City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Number Twenty Four dash zero three eight, Special Revenue Grant Fund Ordinance Number Eleven dash zero zero three, Sanitation Fund Ordinance Number Twenty Four dash zero three eight, and the Facility Improvements Fund Ordinance Number Twenty Four dash zero three eight. I'll again turn it over to Mr.-
This is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Six. This will be impacting the Operating Fund, Special Revenue Grant Fund, the Sanitation Fund, and the Facility Improvement Fund. Item day will be adjusting revenues to our projected actuals based on year-to-date collections. And that will increase the general fund budget by nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We'll also be recognizing the Justice Assistance Grant funding received and recognizing grant received from the Governor's Highway Safety Program. Both of these grants are in the Special Revenue Grant Fund, and will increase that fund seventy-seven thousand dollars. And we'll also be transferring funds from our Sanitation Fund to the Facility Improvement Fund to complete the Public Works Yard lighting project. And that will increase both the Sanitation Fund and the Facility Improvement Fund by seventy-five thousand dollars. That brings our total operating budget to a hundred ninety-one point six million dollars. And we ask that council approve Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Six.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Foreman, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Should we just, I'm thinking we should probably skip the City Manager's report. Anybody want to make a motion to skip the City Manager's report?
Absolutely not. Are you kidding?
Look, the best part of the new year is the new shout-outs from the City Manager.
Yay!
Let's, let's throw it on the screen.
Let's first see what it is.
Tonight's shout-out goes to my buddy-
Yes.
Okay, yeah, all right, I get behind this.
Our custodial crew leader, Sheldon McLean. And those of you that know Sheldon, know that he is an absolute rock star. He is just one heck of a great guy. Imagine this, you have thirty-six parks, ten facilities, countless athletic fields, picnic shelters, and greenways, all needing that extra effort to make them shine. That's where Sheldon and his incredible work ethic come in. He and other employees work tirelessly to keep our community space clean, safe, and inviting for all citizens to enjoy. Sheldon isn't just a leader, he is a positive force. He always has a smile and a helping hand, and his team spirit is contagious. He even told me a couple of last month, he wanted to wash my Jeep for me just because he wanted to see it shine. Have at it. Whether it's a regular workday, special event at the town common, or mopping and dancing while cleaning at a staff luncheon, Sheldon's dedication shines through. His dedication to the City of Greenville can be seen through his work, and is making Greenville a brighter place for all of us. And those, he is one heck of a, of a great guy. He is a hard worker, but let me tell you, he can roller skate with the best of them.
Oh, really?
I'm telling you, I was at a parade in Washington, and I'm like, sitting there, and I'm like, here he comes rolling by. You know, he is just an outstanding guy. So, he represents everything great about the City of Greenville, and I just want to give a special shout-out to Sheldon, and thank you for, for, for your service here at your office.
Does he have like a legit, like the real roller skates, or like roller blades?
No, it's the, it's the old school.
Okay.
He can do the dip and everything, man.
We should clear out the council chamber, we'll get him up here to do it.
He has actually been up here at City Hall doing, showing us some moves.
Has he?
Yes, he has.
You will have, you'll have skates after a while, won't you?
And that's not gonna happen.
Hey, I want the two of you to race.
Congratulations.
But, but, no, thank you Sheldon for everything you do.
Yes.
And also last, also, it's Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I'd like to thank all of our, our police officers for the great service they provide to our city, day in and day out. Thank you, thank you, you're doing an outstanding job. That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, comments from the mayor and the city council. We started there last time. Councilmember Foreman?
I'm gonna be brief, but we attended the Housing Authority Conference in Florida. And that was an eye-opening experience. So, just enjoy the time with Danae and Michael in attendance, but-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You went to Florida with him?
She has to do it every day.
Well, yes, that'll, that'll be it for me.
Did you got, did you learn a bunch of really good things?
I bet that was awesome.
Um, it was, I think we came back with some good nuggets of things that, that the board over there could implement to improve the best practices over there. So, yeah, there were some decent nuggets.
You gonna set up appointment to meet with them?
I, I will.
No, you will. I, I wouldn't have asked that question if I didn't know the answer.
Yeah.
Thank you guys for doing that, we appreciate it. Councilmember Blackburn?
Sure. Just want to thank all my colleagues on the council tonight for a very spirited and, I think, very well reasoned, well considered, respectful conversation. I think some of us may have had different sort of perspectives, the prism that we viewed specifically the issue with the flag request, but in the end, I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the community mindedness that everyone brought to that conversation. And, and I also appreciate both the applicant and Mr. McGlaughorn from the public who came to speak. This is what we do. It is, it is government by the people, for the people, and of the people. And it belongs to you, the people of Greenville. And so, whoever, everyone, every time people come out, whatever the issue, whether it's just a rezoning, public comments, just love that and want to always encourage that and see that grow. With the cold weather that we've been having, we're gonna have, I, I was telling Councilmember Willis, I have animals to take care of. I get, you know, in the morning, I feed the birds, I throw out cat food for the raccoons and the possums. If you have animals around you, you, you have cats around you, you don't know if anybody's feeding them. It may seem like, wow, I don't want to do this, why am I feeding this cat that's not mine? But, you know, they really need it. These cats don't ask to be dumped, they don't ask to be born out in the wild, and it's a very hard life for them. So, times like this, we really just need people in the community to, 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 to just go ahead and step up and, and take some responsibility for helping to care for these animals. Because this is really difficult for both the domesticated animals like cats, who nonetheless may be wild or feral, as well as for wildlife. And then, the last thing I want to mention is our annual planning session. Boys, it's a fun time. I want to invite the entire community, well, maybe not the entire community, I don't think we have space looking at my-
Hey, I wish you would have seen Emmanuel's face.
I know, I saw two. I saw two shocked faces. I would just, if, if you're interested in city government, our, our planning session, or in, not in city government, in your city, our planning session is January twenty-fourth. We start four o'clock Friday afternoon, and then we continue all day Saturday. This is where, you know, sometimes I hear people say, I had no idea that such-and-such was gonna happen. Or I had no idea that this area was gonna be rezoned, was planned this way. This is really an excellent opportunity to really see how Greenville is being, you know, moved forward, moved, moved, advanced. And so, I invite anyone to attend, and if we need to use spillover space and have it projected on, you know, TVs, actually, it will be, it will, it will be livestreamed, right? So, yeah, if you can't get out, please do livestream it.
We could put one of those like giant, like, those like-
Jumbotron?
Right outside out here.
It's a really good, really good opportunity to, to learn about your-
Chief, you got, you got the control, crowd control?
We get tons of people. All jokes aside, it really is an excellent event. It's excellent for us councilmembers, it's excellent to be with city staff, and it's excellent for our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone. Congratulations to Mr. McLean, was it? And happy Law Enforcement Appreciation Day to all of our law enforcement that keep our cities safe. Thank you to Mrs. Pam Strickland, who came forth and brought awareness about Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Congratulations to our, congratulations to our new homeowners this evening. Martin Luther King Junior Day is coming up, the observation of that day, and so, there are lots of different programs and events going on, and we hope to see you out at those throughout our community. And I pray that everybody remains safe in the weather that we have coming up. I too was pleased with the spirited conversation and, and ideas that were brought forth tonight. A very wise woman told me that we have to understand that ideas should be thrown in the ring and not people. And if we can let the idea with the most merit rise to the top and get behind it, then that's what unity is. And I think we were able to do that tonight for our city. So, it's very pleased to see that. So, until next month, I hope everybody is safe and has a prosperous, continued New Year.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. I would love to see us keep working on finding a way to provide some warming facilities for people during cold days like this. Been thinking a lot about it, it's so cold. Walk into my car even, I get cold. And then, you think about the individuals who are without homes during this time, who don't have a place to go and get warm. Or even people that can't afford to pay their utilities, who are in cold houses. It's cold. And we, as a community, have the resources to do something about it, and it's time, time to do something about it.
I wasn't going to elevate it, because you guys know where my heart is and where the bulk of my work is. But when animals were mentioned, I couldn't help but want to mention that we need to be considerate of the cold people that are in our community and needing food and, and warmth. And we are working offline. I'll, I'll update you on that-
Great.
When we're done tonight, on warming stations.
So, God bless the community, and let us do our part in the meantime to help one another out, to reach helping hands, to buy somebody a warm drink or a warm meal, give them an opportunity to get inside a restaurant for a minute, or whatever it is you can do to, to be kind and to help one another out. That's the right thing to do. Ditto of what's already been said, not to waste time, but happy Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, Chief. I hope you'll spread that to all of your officers. We deeply appreciate all that you do in the community, keeping us safe. Thank you very much. An exciting thing for me this month, I'm in, gonna be in my second ballet. My daughters, I'm a proud dad of three girls, and they all dance. None of them play sports, to my great dismay. But I've got their back a hundred percent, so I'm there. I am at the ballet rehearsal, and they asked me if I'd be in the ballet again. So I'm gonna be Uncle Henry in The Wizard of Oz. Wizard of Oz will be presented by the Greenville Civic Ballet at East Carolina University. That'll be on January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, a Saturday at six P.M., not a matinee, I'll be at the planning session that morning. You can come see me in the ballet that night. And then, the next day, Sunday at three P.M. I hope you'll come out and support all the dancers. And I hope you'll, you'll take every opportunity to be involved in your kids' lives, even if it's something like a dad being in a ballet. Say yes and do it, you're gonna have a great time, and your kids are gonna really appreciate it and remember it forever. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, congratulations to Ms. Perry, Mrs. May, or Ms. May and Mr. Swindell on your new homes. Was an excitement, particularly with, with Ms. Perry, because she's got a young daughter that's gonna hopefully celebrate her birthday in her home. Congratulations to them. I'm proud of the peer, because it's ADA compliant, and there was a gentleman that worked in Greenville. They had a great saying, it's Frank White, Southern Spotsman, take a kid fishing. And so, it's also, now, if you take a kid fishing, you also can be at the end of the period, as Councilmember Blackburn said, and look at the, just the beauty of nature. So it's a great thing to do out there. The city and the county are working together for the Tarver cleanup. That's really important, because if you ride that river, you will see there's a lot of down trees and stuff that can cause problems, ecclesions of trash that backs up the water, it causes erosion. I would offer a suggestion that the county and the city coordinate, maybe with the Pamlico Tarver Keepers, because they do a lot of cleanups for the river likewise. Hope going forward that when we look at our budget, we look at where we can cut programs that maybe aren't being productive or not really helpful to us, and look at going back to the basics of EMS, fire, and police. We know as council members, over the last several weeks, have been numerous shootings, some of which resulted in death. And we've got to do a better job. We've got to give our chief resources. He's doing an excellent job of the resources that he's doing, but we've got to do better, because our citizens do not need to live in fear of being hit by a stray bullet by some gang member. And I said it again, and I'm gonna say it now, there needs to be aggressive law enforcement, prosecution, and punishment, so that those people, while they're doing these bad things and pulling guns and shooting each other, they understand real quick that if you do that in the city limits of Greenville, Pitt County, you're going to prison. Because it's not fair to our citizens who live out there, who do not do anything other than try and simply live and go to and from their homes, and these people are committing these crimes. And what I'm hoping our city will do is look and analyze where these shootings are taking place, and go out there and start trying to be enforce it. Now, that may not be popular among people, but as I've said a long time ago, if my house has termites damage on the northeast corner, I don't go to the southwest corner to fix it, I go where the problem is. So, Chief, I hope we'll identify these, these problem areas, and that the city council will back you up with additional resources and funds to keep doing what you're doing, to target these areas, to catch them, prosecute them, and send them out of here. So we send a message that that's not gonna be tolerated in our community. So I hope we'll do that, and look at the budget along with that. Also, along that, I'm glad we passed the facilities for the fire burn. We also need to look at maybe providing additional fire station on the, I guess it would be the southwest section of Greenville behind the Lowe's. Need to look at that, because again, going back to the basics, our citizens need to have protection, they need to have EMS coming and stuff like that. And that, what, that four-minute response time, we need to work on that going forward in 2025, it's some goals. Just about through, Mayor. Tomorrow night, we're getting some bad weather, and it's probably going to be Saturday and Sunday. Stay home, stay safe, and stay warm. And yesterday, you know, this morning about seven-thirty, I saw one of our Public Works workers, I had seen Mr. Manager at the Parker Barbecue Festival, and I stopped to thank him, because they're gonna be out there working in the cold weather while we're all standing inside trying to stay warm and taking care of our roadways, either clearing or continuing to put out the salt products the county cleans, I'll be thinking about them. Finally, I appreciate the spirited debate on the flag issue. I want to make it clear, because I know some people were run with stories and whatnot, I don't like the process for what happened, and that's what I spoke about tonight. But in the same air, I thought the flag's beautiful. It's big, I love big flags, I'm all patriotic. But the ordinance is drafted, has three flags on three poles, that's nine flags of three turns square feet. That's not acceptable. I'm all about one flag. So I hope that they'll perhaps look at a, at a single flag pole with a flag that allows it to be displayed at half mast in the course of it, and I'm fine with it, because I think, I agree with the mayor, I think the flag is beautiful. But I don't like the process, and so, you don't get a free pass just because you, you, you were saying you're doing something for the flag. So, I'm all about looking at something down the road that's more in line with a single pole with a large flag, and I'm all for that along with the mayor. I'm not, and did not vote, as I said, in favor of the one that we have. But I am in favor of looking at the ordinance again and making it drafted, and then make people comply with the law, because we've got to comply with the law regardless of what we're doing going forward. So, in that regard, I would join the mayor in saying, I thought it was a beautiful flag, I'm sure I'll go pass it when I go home. I don't like the process by which it was obtained and put up, and we are a nation of laws and due process, and we've got to do things the correct way. And I'm all about being more than happy to look at it, ordinance. And I wish, I wish, and this is a hope Camping World's listening, I wish that you'll take the process, and that when you want to come to a city and want to put up one of your big flags, which I think are great, use the process, and come to us upfront and say, I want to amend your statute by putting up my flag, and do the right thing. Because I think everybody up here would be a lot more susceptible to that, because too many people are confusing this with our view on the flag versus the process, and it's not the same. It is not the same. So I want to be clear about that. I'm upset about the process they used to get the flag up, not the flag itself. So again, I know I'm being long-winded, and, but I do want to echo that, I'm all in favor of the big flag. But, you know, unfortunately, all of us up here, we read all these materials, and those in the staff read everything. And unfortunately, there are people who will comment out there without knowing anything about the facts of themselves. But I would encourage you, please go look, I'm gonna post online what those three flags look like. And I'm gonna post the application that Camping World put out there for everybody to see. And again, if you want to look at ordinance, it's, it's one flag pole with a big flag. I'm all more, I'm more than happy to look at it and certainly consider it and probably would vote in favor as along with the mayor, if it was a tie. But those are my comments. Mayor, thank you. I think I've covered everything I wanted to cover. Oh, I forgot one thing. Congratulations to our ECU football team. They won a spirited football game. Give them a great hand. The coach took over.
Pirates.
What a football game it was. I took my wife and, and my daughter and two of her friends, and we were, we're divided. We're sitting in the Pirate side, but my daughter and two friends go to State, so it was kind of interesting, and it was a good game. But right in the last, the Pirates pulled it out. So congratulations to the Pirates, and I hope they take the momentum that they- and I hope they take the momentum that they end the, end of the season with, and they take it into a new season this year. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My comments are always short, and I'll, I'll end it there.
That's wonderful. Mayor Pro Tem Daniels?
I'm gonna make mine as really short. Just wanted to, um, wish our, our police department a happy Police Appreciation Day, always appreciate everything that you do. It's more than fighting crime for our police department, and that's appreciated. You work with the community, and, um, that makes us stronger, so I appreciate you. Also, I want to thank, um, Deputy Senate Manager Ken Graves and Assistant City Manager Danae, um, for letting me bring in the New Year with them, we had a good time down at the Town Common. I know, right? It was like, what is she going to say? Yeah, we had a really good time. Wasn't as cold as the prior year, so that made it a whole lot better. Yes. Um, I do encourage everyone to be safe. Once all this snow and ice come in, if you don't have to go out, please don't go out. Um, there's nothing, the stores will be there when the storm is over.
Hopefully.
Um, they will.
Okay.
And I'd also like to thank Public Works, they're already out there making sure our streets are safe and covered, and just looking out for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I too want to reiterate, Happy Law Enforcement Day. Thank you to all of our police officers that work incredibly hard to keep our community safe. I know that, uh, you guys go into things and see things that none of us want to see, so thank you for that, we appreciate your protection for our community. A little shocked, I don't think I heard anything, man, unless I missed it, did anybody up here say anything about our Martin Luther King Junior events that are coming up?
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, I think you did. So we've got two of them, I think, that I know of that are coming up.
But there's so many.